Yeah, yeah.
It's over.
It's over?
Okay.
Who was?
Okay. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, public law nineteen seventy-five, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board at town hall and serving the officially designated newspaper a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place at the Melbourne Board of Education Education Center Building at seven P M. on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
Darnielsen?
Here.
Eric? That's all? Eric? Are we no raptors?
Yeah.
Moving colors?
Yeah.
Joseph Paulfield?
Yeah.
Just a lot.
Here. Um, okay, we have no, uh, the minutes?
There are no minutes.
There are no minutes and no memorialization. Um, okay, so moving right along, we are going to start with um calendar forty forty-nine F twenty-five. The property location is fifty-one Silver Spring Road. Do we have those applicants here?
Good. So we're gonna testify, we just raise your right hand.
Oh, imagine. I got that, uh, this one.
Yeah, swear everybody in. You, your right hand, you swear from testimony about the given proceeding, nice proceeding, be the truth, we found the truth?
Yes, yeah, I do.
We'll start with you, your name for the record.
Uh, my, my name is Kim Ki, my first name spells Q I A N, my last name spells H E.
Thank you.
And my name is Yue Zhang, first name Yue, Y U E, last name Zhang, K H A N G.
Matthew Flynn, F L Y N N.
And Douglas Miller, from A H M Architects, located at two eighty-one Main Street in Melbourne.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening. Uh, first of all, thank you so much for considering our application. Um, and Yue Zhang, and this is my wife, Kim, was the applicant for this application. Uh, we're relatively new to this community. Uh, we moved here about three years ago, um, and, but ever since then, our entire family has so much fond memories, um, uh, fun activities, and every of us are making a lot of new friends here. Um, and I do personally enjoy the barbecue and ice cream days with my neighbors. Uh, and our family feels like finally we've found a place that we, everyone else love, and we do want to stay for longer. Um, and, uh, and then we grow our families. So this year, we just have our second baby born, Zoe. She was a little girl and a little seven months over now. Um, and, uh, there, well, there's a lot of happiness, joy, and spreading over the house. Uh, there are also coming a lot of frustrating moments, making us think about make some changes to the front peak. So that's what we are.
Right, as, as my, as my husband mentioned, our family has been growing and our, facing our house is limited, being just sized up our family. And our, uh, son Leo, who's going to elementary school next year, he has never had his own room since he was born, and he has been sharing the same room with my husband and myself. And our baby girl, we haven't been able to set up a proper nursery for her because there's no space, and she's in the same room with her mom. And also, but considering my husband and I are both working from home most of the time, and he has to be working from the basement, it seems to be most important. So getting all that challenges, we're looking to have another bathroom for the family and a study room, so to support our work from home needs.
And we unfortunately have worked with Doug and Matt to help us develop a plan that is not only translate our needs to, uh, to be concrete, uh, concreteized plan, but also, uh, uh, fulfill the, uh, being respectful and appropriate for the neighborhood. Uh, with that, I hand over to Doug, and thanks so much for your input.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good evening.
Did you just give us your qualifications?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Douglas Miller from A H M Architects. In our Licensed Architectures two thousand and one, I've made many presentations to this board, as well as numerous boards throughout the state. Uh, my license is current in state.
Thank you.
So good evening. Uh, yeah, my files came to me with the goal, as they stated, improving the house for the growing family and their work from home lifestyle. Uh, let me briefly describe the project to you. Um, our lot here, at least the same plans you have before you, our lot is seventy, approximately seventy by one thirteen point seven five feet, or seven thousand nine hundred sixty-three square feet, located in the R five zone. It's narrower and significantly smaller than required for the zone, where seventy-five foot width, a hundred twenty-five foot depth, and fourteen thousand five hundred square feet is, uh, required. So a little over half, uh, the size required for the zone, so significantly undersized. The, on our existing house, the way it's cited on the property, the width of the lot, the depth of the lot, the lot area, both side yard setbacks, the side yard setbacks combined, the building coverage, then the lot coverage are all existing non-conforming. Basically, the only thing that is conforming is the building height and the front yard setbacks. So we had an uphill battle trying to design a plan that would be conforming. Obviously, it was not possible, that's why we're here. The typical split level home designed in nineteen fifty, and we're requesting C variances, uh, one for building coverage. There's no change to the building footprint, with the exception of a portico added over the existing front stoop. Um, side yard setback up to eighteen foot, um, side yard setback above eighteen feet, and a combined side yard setback. These variances are kind of three interclined. If we ask for one, we need all three. Um, it's just because of the nature of where our addition is. Uh, you know, they're all just interconnected. And then we're also asking for a D variance for floor area ratio. Um, this is all to expand the house on this section of the house, the right side, um, over the existing footprint, uh, to create a little bit more space. Um, those variances are required to the narrow undersized lot, the hardship of having all the existing non-conformities, as well as the house rotated on the site. It's odd, it's rotated, twisted a little bit clockwise. So the front yard setback is greater than the rear yard setback, uh, which, you know, presented challenges with the way the side yard setback is interpreted. Uh, let me walk you through the other, other plans. These are the floor plans. Over here is the existing lower level. It's made up of, of, uh, kitchen, dining, living room, a garage, and a sunroom at the rear. The only change on this level, as I mentioned, is just the portico over the, uh, front stoop. On the second floor, the left side of the house is all existing. Three small bedrooms with two small bathrooms, and we're proposing to add this level over the existing kitchen, dining, living areas. It consists of a, a primary bedroom with closet, their own private bath, and a work from home space. Next page is the existing elevations. It's a typical split level, really nondescript. It's a split level you've driven past a thousand times. There's millions of these houses that have been built, you know, throughout this neighborhood and all the surrounding towns. What we're proposing? But I think something that really elevate the house, make something a lot.
Sorry to interrupt. Are you guys able?
You know what, I, I see, and I also.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just like moving it.
Oh, there you go.
Better. Thank you. Everybody seen that? Okay. Yeah, so as you can see, uh, I think the change is, yeah.
Okay, yes, if anyone in the audience is here for this application wants to see, you can move up here too. Okay, sorry.
Well, that's okay. Yeah, I want everybody to see what I'm talking about. Uh, yeah, so, uh, you can see on the, the lower left is the proposed front elevation. And what we've really done here is try to create something a lot more attractive. Uh, we use a, a variety of materials. We use clapboard siding. We use nested gables on the right side. Uh, we use some small roof peaks, uh, over these existing windows on the left side, to create a, a more attractive, balanced composition. I, I feel the changes really enhance the curb appeal. We also have a brick base and a brick water table, and I think that gives a lot of textural interest to the facade, much more attractive than what's there now. And the variety of materials, as well as the trim band and stepping the roof lines, go a long way to break down the scale of the house, to make the house feel smaller than if it was just one big box. And before I turn it over to the planner to go through all the variances, you know, I, I didn't go through all the details of all the variances needed because I think that for me to go through all that and then for him to go through that would just be kind of, uh, you know, taking too much time. But I would like to say that I think that what we're proposing here, the property can really handle the deviation due to the unique makeup of our lot and the surrounding neighborhood. Um, the section of town is going under a, a lot of transition as other areas of the town have become so much more expensive. The cost of relocating has really become, become unattainable for so many, and so more people are choosing to renovate and expand. In this section of town, you can see, you know, a lot of houses are, are being transformed, and we're working on a few of them right now. Um, therefore, I think the additions proposed, very being modest, go a long way to maintaining and improving the immediate character of the neighborhood, as well as, you know, looking at the site plan and the zoning calculations. There's really no good way to expand this house without variances relief. I feel the benefits of what we're proposing are gonna far outweigh the detriment. And we're not creating any of these setbacks, these non-conformities. We're just trying to figure out the best way to deal with it. So let me turn it over to our planner, but I'll open it up to any questions from the board before I do that.
Any questions?
And you said that you're trying to, uh, you, you have a whole bunch of variants that we're going for right here.
Right.
Have you looked into tweaking it to at least eliminate some of them versus the whole kibboodle, so to speak?
Yeah, basically, all the variances, the building coverage is existing. Um, you know, we're just having a portico, so I think that's really diminishment, de minimis. It's, it's very, very few square footage, uh, for that, and I think it goes a long way to improving the safety of the house. Putting a covering over that front stoop, you know, keeping it safer for people to walk in inclement weather, um, adds a lot of visual interest and depth to the house. Right now, it's very slab-like and flat. Um, so I think the building coverage, uh, variance is, is so small because what we're building is on top of the existing footprint everywhere else, so we're not changing the building coverage. Um, side yard setback, because of the way the side yard setback and the property's angle, if we pull the second floor in to be conforming on that right side, it would take away, uh, so much of the usable space that there would be almost no point of doing the addition. The rooms would be very narrow, and we would lose the functionality. We couldn't have that work from home space, and my client would still have to be in the basement because, as you know, in these split levels, the reason they were built is because there's, it was more economical, and you only have a small basement under a proportion of the house, and so you don't have storage space. They have a, a larger family, and it's only three bedrooms now. So like they, like mine had said, there's no space. So yes, we did look at other ways, to answer your question, we did look at other ways to do it. There were just no good way to, to accommodate their goals while dealing with the non-conformity of that right side existing non-conforming setback.
Do you know, maybe this is for the planner, but do you know how the height compared? The post height is, is twenty-seven point seven five feet.
Yeah.
How that compares to the surrounding?
I think it's, it's fairly consistent. If you drive through the, the neighborhood, uh, and it's, you drive through any neighborhood that has done a renovation on split, this is the number one most popular addition, is to build up over that kitchen area. We didn't go too steep with the roof pitches, so we tried to keep it, um, as low as possible. So of the houses that have this addition, I think we're, we're fairly consistent.
Any other questions? Any questions from anyone in the audience?
All right, I'll turn it over to our planner at that point. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Sorry?
Yeah, just your qualifications?
Sure. Uh, education comes from Rutgers, master's degree in planning and public policy, professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey, A I C P license is the national licensure for planners. Both are in good standing. I believe I've testified before this board, although it looked somewhat different when I did that a couple of years ago, um, and over a hundred other boards across the state.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just to jump right in here, um, we heard the testimony, we saw the proposed, um, addition in, uh, our architect's plans here. When we look at variance applications like this for home additions, there's really three main things that I look at from a planning perspective. Um, one being the current home itself. Um, two, comparing that to the neighborhood at large. And then three, comparing that to the, what the zoning, um, contemplates for this zone. Um, so here, importantly, I think our architect mentioned it, we are substantially undersized property. This zone calls for fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. We had about half of that at seven thousand nine hundred sixty-three square feet. Um, and so for that reason, like our architect mentioned, many of these vantage are existing conditions. The side setbacks are existing non-conforming conditions. Um, and again, that's, that's a factor of not only the undersized lot area, but our lot width is also a little narrower than the zoning, um, anticipates for a property in this zone. Importantly, if we were a fourteen thousand five hundred square foot lot, which again is the minimum that's contemplated in the zone, um, our F A R would be just that eighteen point nine percent. We're allowed to go up to thirty percent. Um, and so the only reason that's important is that I think that the zoning ordinance contemplates a certain sized home in the zone. Um, regardless of lot size, um, this is still going to constitute a smaller home in the context of zoning. Of course, like I mentioned, I did look at the other homes in the, in the neighborhood here, and the existing home at about twenty-one hundred square feet is actually the smallest home in the immediate area. And so basically, what I looked at were the homes that are along Silver Spring Road between Orange Drive to the north and then Troy Road to the south. So that basically constitutes the block that we're, that we're in. And I looked at the homes on each side of Silver Spring Road. And again, the current home is the smallest home that I found. And I found that based on property record cards. I, I have capability to see, um, basically the, the existing home sizes through those property record cards. And so when we look at the proposed home with the addition, we're still not nearly, we're not even close to being the largest home in the area. We're right in line with the average of what we see, um, again, along this stretch of Silver Spring Road. And just to give you the numbers there, I calculated the average home size to be twenty-eight, or two thousand eight hundred twenty-one square feet, and that's factoring in the existing house. Um, whereas we're proposing again a, uh, uh, two thousand seven hundred fifty-two square feet. So right in line with that prevailing average. When you're driving up or down Silver Spring Road, we're not going to stand out as being something that's excessively large in the context of the neighborhood. Again, we're right in line with what we typically see here. Um, another important thing to note is that sometimes when we look at undersized properties, a, a question that might come up with some boards is, well, are you part of a, a pattern of other undersized properties? In this case, the, the simple answer is no. Um, and so for that reason, a small undersized home on this property would actually stand for more, uh, stand out more than, again, a typical sized home. Um, so with that, as sort of the backdrop, as our architect mentioned, I'll just walk you through the variance relief. Um, we are requesting an F A R variance of thirty-four point five percent, whereas thirty percent is the requirement. Again, the existing home is twenty-one hundred square feet, and we're bumping that up about six hundred forty square feet to twenty-seven fifty. Side setbacks, um, we are requesting, uh, side setback for the portion of the home that's up to eighteen feet in height. Again, that's an existing condition, ten point four feet, whereas twelve feet is required. We're just extending that side setback going up. And then addition, in addition, the side setback above eighteen feet, um, which would constitute the addition. Um, again, ten point four feet, since we are just bringing that wall straight up versus the required thirteen point three feet. And then an extension of that would be the combined setbacks, where we're requesting a thirty-one point nine percent versus thirty-five percent. And then finally, the building coverage at eighteen point nine percent versus eighteen percent required, um, or permitted. Um, here, we're looking at, uh, again, just covering that portico, so we're not extending the, the building footprint or the development footprint whatsoever. So like I mentioned, what I did as part of my analysis was, again, I looked at the surrounding homes to tie all of that, um, all of that relief into the statutory criteria. So I'll start with the C relief, so this is the setbacks as well as the coverage. I think we can look to the C two balancing test, all of the benefits of the application as a whole. Substantially outweigh any detriments. Um, to do this, we look at the municipal land use law, the purposes of zoning. Why do we have these controls in the first place? Um, purpose A, promotion of the general welfare. We heard that this is a very small house, um, in its existing condition. We are providing a more livable home, more on par with the rest of the neighborhood. It doesn't only benefit this homeowner, but any future homeowners that would be looking to reside in this neighborhood would, would benefit from having a more typical sized house. Um, but to that extent, I would say that having a home that's more in keeping with the neighborhood is to the benefit of the neighborhood at large. It's better than having a abnormally small house, um, in the context of the, of the neighborhood. Purpose I of the M L U L is desirable visual environment. I think this was the heart of our architect's testimony. We are, I would say, substantially sprucing up that front facade, um, over the existing conditions. Again, that's going to be to the direct benefit, um, of the streetscape, the visual impact of this property. Um, purpose N, efficient use of land. So again, obviously, we're working with the existing footprint of the house. We're not getting any closer to any neighboring properties. We're not getting any closer to any property lines. And of course, we are within the height limit of the zone. So the flip side to that is the negative criteria, no substantial detriment to the public or to the zone. Um, again, we're not getting any closer to our neighbors or within the height limitation. Um, really, I think all said, even with the, um, proposed addition, this is not going to stand out as an overly large home. It's still relatively small in the context of the area. It's not going to overpower the street. Um, and for those reasons, I would say it does not have a substantial detriment. So to flip over to the F A R variance, the reason I like to go through the C relief first is really because the F A R sort of takes into account holistically all of those other requirements for setbacks, coverage, and the like. It's sort of a global view of the massing, um, uh, as a whole of this home. And so I think really the positive criteria carry forth for the F A R variance. We are vastly improving this property, um, making it more typical and, um, making it more, uh, in line with the other homes in the area. In terms of the negative criteria for the F A R, I sort of hinted at this, but first I'd like to just also put on the record, um, this town does have requirements for front setback. Obviously, we comply with that. We also have requirements for unoccupied rear yard. We comply with that. Um, so the addition's not going in the back, and I think our relationship to our neighbor in the back is going to remain unchanged and unaffected. Um, and to that extent, rear setback is remaining compliant. Building height is compliant. And there's also a requirement for front yard coverage, um, which we're also compliant with that as well. So like I said, not bringing this home any closer to any proper yards. Um, like I said, I did look at some of these other homes in the area, um, basically along this block, as well as across the street from the block. And I, maybe one of the easy ways to, to, uh, look at this is if we look at the three properties to the left of the house and three properties to the right, um, of those six properties, four of them have excessive F A R, and two of those are even on much larger properties than ours. Um, so I would say that, again, that's just sort of an example of how this is not going to stand out, um, especially when we look at those immediately adjacent properties. Um, and then just reiterating, like I said, I did look at the average home size in this immediate area, and we are right in line with that. Um, really, all said, there's going to remain a lot of other homes in the area that are substantially larger, um, and this is really going to bring this home right up to par with what we would like to see, I would say, in the neighborhood. Um, so if the board needs any more detail or has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Probably should have asked this of the architect. Is there anything in the attic, will there be any living space in the attic?
Uh, there's no living space.
Okay, is there, will be a floor, does that add to the F A R at all?
It does not, no. The, the attic's very small, because we didn't maximize the roof pitch.
Okay, and this is going from a three-bedroom house to four?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that kind of just brought to my mind another thing maybe to note is that the building addition is over the existing single-story portion of the house. Um, and just long sort of brainstorm here, the side setback that goes, that gets greater as you go up in height, it's important to note that the other side that the addition is not going to be on, we're going to have basically that setback extending all the way to the addition. So to the extent we do need setback relief, there is nice open space on the other side.
And I have a question about the windows, since I don't know if that might be more for the, the architect. Um, but right now, on that side, uh, where you're going to do the extension, I believe there's like one side window and then the shaft, and then there'll be three?
Three windows on the right side.
On the, on the right side, on the upper level?
Correct.
Was consideration given to the neighbors and how far that'll be, or sort of how close it'll be to?
Yeah, I don't think it's inconsistent with the neighborhood. You know, we, we need to get some natural light and, and to those rooms and the windows. We, we kept the larger windows on the, on the front of the house and, and kept the smaller on the side.
Matt, you said, uh, you looked up and down to the, uh, neighbors on the, the same side of the street on Silver Spring. Did you look at fifty-seven Silver Spring, that on your notes? That seems to be something that was done recently.
Do you know where that?
There with me for one, seven.
Yeah, that would probably be, I'm guessing, probably lot seventeen, or maybe lot eighteen, seventeen?
Yes, I think that's two doors down.
It's green, it was, it looks like it was done recently. Um, when I say recently, given my vision, it's in the last ten years.
Yeah, I, I don't know when that was done.
Okay, I mean, you said you mentioned, looked into a couple different that, that exceeded their floorier ratios. How did you determine that?
Yeah, so like I said, we look at property record cards, which is, I think, on file with the building department and V C A. Um, and it looks at first floor area as well as second floor area. And if there's a third or a partial, uh, third floor, we look at that too. I add those up and then compare that to the lot area.
Did you look to see if any variances were issued for the neighboring properties or anything?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Matt, with regard to the property that is, if you're at the front door of this house, looking at Silver Spring, and you look at the property to the left, I think, uh, maybe lot twenty? Right, right next door, that's the one that's going to be most potentially impacted by the addition.
Right.
Um, did you take a look at the F A R of that house? You said that four or six properties closest have excessive F A R, is that one of them?
Yeah, that's one of the few properties that are sort of in line with the lot area that we have, and that property, based on my calculation, have an F A R of thirty-eight percent, which is a little higher than what we're proposing. And that home size, I got two thousand nine hundred fifty-nine square feet, so that's a larger home.
Thank you.
Another question. Any of the hardscapes, the paved driveway, the walkway, the concrete patio, would any of them affect any of the variances if you reduced the size of those, or would they be not really helpful?
No, because we're not requesting a lot coverage variant.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from anyone in the audience?
Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have any comment? Um, Mr. Miller, is, are you done with your presentation or?
Yes, uh, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Okay, as there are no more questions, I will open it up to the board members.
Just to remind the board, because one of the variances reported is an FAR for area ratio variance. It is a form of devariance and requires five or four meetings. We have to have at least five, um, of seven board members, so it would be imperative for approval that you may wish to have separate votes.
Does anyone want to start off? I can. Um, you know, I mean, I think that as a board, we never like to see, um, variances for FAR, but I, I do think that there is a real hardship here. I mean, this house is basically, the, the lot is basically half the size of what it was supposed to be. Um, and, you know, to have a house, it's kind of not up to modern day standards. Um, and, you know, an applicant that wants to make it that way, you're, you're kind of left with no other option but to ask for variances. Um, I personally think that, um, everything was really tastefully done. I think that the property and the neighborhood could absolutely, you know, handle this kind of, um, addition. I, I think that it'll actually add to the streetscape from, you know, the current, um, aesthetic of the house. Um, and I could, I could support the application.
Yeah, I agree with those comments, um, I think, uh, there's real hardship here and I think, um, this house as proposed would not in any way stand out in the neighborhood. Line, uh, would gather homes in the neighborhood and it's, uh, and, and I think practically the streetscape will look a lot better with the, the plans that are proposed. So, um, I think, given the hardships, um, and I think what will ultimately be a much better outcome, I would be supportive of the application.
I'm going to say ditto to that, I visited the property and met the homeowners briefly, and I would say that there's several homes in the neighborhood that look like they've done very similar projects. So I think it would, um, fit right in, what you've done is very, um, very attractive, I think it's going to be, you know, proven. Um, these are modest asks, I don't like to see a number of variances, but because of the site, the lot is others have said, um, I think we didn't do much choice, so I would.
Yeah, I think the design and the testimony both, uh, look well to the application. I agree with that a lot. Anyone else?
I did.
Okay, um, in that case, why don't we go to a vote, um, would, would someone like to make a motion for the, um, C variances, so that would be the side yard setback, um, up to eighteen feet in height, above eighteen feet in height, by the side yard setback and building coverage?
Just reminding the board that definitely it was provided by Mr. Flynn in support of those variances, under book, uh, a C one argument as well as a C. So who?
Second.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
That's all?
Yes.
Yelena Roberts?
Yes.
Stephen Cohen?
Yes.
Joseph Paulfield?
Yes.
Justin Blatt?
Yes.
Um, would someone like to make a motion for the floor area reshoot? The devary?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to approve the application.
Okay.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Truitt?
Yes.
That's all?
Yes.
Yelena Roberts?
Yes.
Stephen Cohen?
Yes.
Joseph Paulfield?
Yes.
Justin Blatt?
Yes.
Good luck?
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about you as, uh,
Is Alan Kennedy something?
Uh, maybe he called was.
Thanks, Alan.
You know, I love looking at things. So this was. She went there to be studied in forty, I think, this.
Okay, um, next up we have calendar four zero five two, desk twenty-five, that's seventy-eight Myrtle Avenue. Uh, and we have one board member who refused for this application. Um, then I believe, and I, I should have mentioned this earlier, but if anyone in the audience is here for another application and you want to come, you know, forward, um, so you could see the presentation, please feel free to move forward. Um, okay, so we'll get you two sworn in.
For, 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 from testimony given tonight, hearing for the truth, all true, not the truth. Your names to the record.
Timothy Kleski.
Speaker by the morning. S R I A R, V A D L A M, A N.
We start?
Yeah.
All right, great. Well, good evening, everyone, thank you for your time. Uh, I know we're all busy, I know I am, uh, spend a lot of time. Uh, heading back from the city today, so I appreciate all of your time. Um, my wife apologizes, she can't be here because she's stuck in traffic. Uh, I, I promise she's much better looking than I am, so. You know, there being here, set. Uh, so we've been in Melbourne for about ten years now, uh, about seven, eight years in the current house we were in. Um, we have two girls, ten and twelve, they both graduated from Williamia Elementary. Love the area, we've been there for almost eight years now. A lot of friends, a lot of good neighbors, uh, and, you know, in general, we just love the neighborhood, right? That really depends there. Um, so when we bought the house, uh, we didn't build it, we just bought it. And at that time, you know, there were things that were built very well, things that weren't. Um, the deck is one of those things that we're finding out as we're, you know, enjoying the space outside, that it's not the best, right? Uh, it's kind of porping a little bit, there's a couple of railings that are missing. Uh, so in, in general, it's not as safe as I would like. Um, the, the other issue with the deck is, although we have a lot of shrubbery in the back, we don't have any trees. So, you know, there's no shade on the deck.
I didn't hear you say the door slant, we have no let.
We don't have any tall trees in the backyard, or just a lot of trees in the backyard. So just, there's not a lot of shade on the deck. So making use of the deck during the summer, the kids, the dog, and, you know, our aging parents come and stay with us from, you know, seventy-three to five, I live in Virginia or elsewhere. Um, you know, we all like to enjoy using the deck during the summer and it's just not possible during the summer, just because there's no shade. Um, and then, uh, you know, it's, it really kind of keeps our ability to enjoy the deck. Um, so what we're, you know, essentially what we're asking for is, you know, I, I need to rebuild it, but along the lines of rebuilding, I would ask for a modest enhancement. And that's where, you know, I guess I'll turn it over to, uh, Tim over here to do his magic hopefully. Uh, but thank you very much for your time. Look forward to it.
Give them some magic. My name is Tim Kleski and I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey and New York, been licensed for about thirty years. Uh, my license is in good standing and I appear in front of this board on numerous occasions and many other boards in the area. I hope you guys would accept me as a licensed architect.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, uh, so the site seventy-eight Myrtle, it's R six zone, it's a big lot, it's ten thousand eight seventy-five, right, really? Only six thousand required. So the, I guess the immediate question comes up is what's the story, how do we need a building problem to vary against? And the real reason is because since the deck is out of grade, we consider building coverage. And I guess that's a relatively neat thing or something, but the whole deck has been counted in building coverage.
Deck is not counted building coverage.
I agree, yeah. I know.
I'm sorry, say that again, Penny?
I mean, the deck is, it, it's not counted building coverage, it's counted as part of the principal building when it comes to setback.
We conform to all setbacks.
The pergola, yeah, that's building coverage.
The, the pergola, the louvered pergola.
Right, portion that's covered is kind of the, but the deck is not.
I'm saying. That's simplify, I'd like to hold off on my case, let somebody else go and come back with your numbers, if I could do that. Because the numbers on, the numbers that we have, that, that entire deck is, uh. You know, I mean, I could even just, maybe I'm wrong, I could actually continue.
No, I just don't buy the number.
They delete the, well, they didn't actually tell me in this case. Well, hold on.
Oh, you don't lie, because probably if you have the patio.
Below?
The deck is.
Covering the patio?
So yes, that is.
Okay, so let's take it, the, the deck is open.
It's, it's building coverage because?
Because it is covering the patio, so exactly.
So that portion of the deck that covers the patio is open, does the, the whole patio is or the whole?
There's an existing patio below the deck.
Yes.
Also, and our intent is to redo the patio and also to redo the dwelling. And as part of that work, our building coverage in this space, just so, I'll just skip right to the numbers. Our building coverage in this space is about twenty-eight point nine percent. Whereas twenty-three percent is actually allowable. That is really, I'm looking at attachment hip, you know, I think twenty-three is your doctrine.
What, what's the existing building coverage?
The existing building coverage is twenty-eight point one percent. And the proposed is twenty-eight point nine.
So what's the difference in square feet?
It's eighty, um, eighty-four square feet of additional request for building coverage. Did I do that wrong?
You say eighty-four?
I, I said eighty-four.
Eight, I get it.
Okay, good. I thought Regina said I did wrong.
So, yeah, so you're going from twenty-eight, existing is twenty-eight point one, you went to twenty-eight point nine.
Twenty-eight point nine, I'm looking right at attachment hip.
But it was already pre-existing.
It's already, it's twenty-eight point one.
Right.
It's already, already non-conforming.
Correct, but conforms, just sort of, conforms to all side yard setbacks. It, um, it's just failing on building coverage because the deck is included in building coverage. For this application. And it's really, I guess, because the patio is below, although the deck is open, you know, it's a normal deck.
Do you know when, when the deck was, like, when the, was, was the deck, the, the deck that's existing, was that constructed when the house was constructed? And if so, was that?
I would assume the house, we talked only about ten years ago? I'm gonna say the, the building was renovated in about twenty-seven, uh, twenty-seventeen.
But there are no variances that were?
No variance. But the deck may, well, you know, I don't know, that may have, could have been there before, the deck actually looks older than eight years. If you really think about it. The deck's fallen apart, like almost to the point where you'd be a little cautious to get on it.
And the patio, you don't know when that was?
Patio is a paper patio, it looks to me like it was built about twenty-five years.
So what are you getting for those eighty-four or five feet?
Well, we, we took a little more.
Getting, you're getting the rounding of the half of the gas pipe?
Yeah, we took a little more depth.
Yeah.
And that depth is what triggered our rear yard unoccupied, which is our second variant to that. The rear yard unoccupied is really going down by the same eighty-four square feet. Or crap, going from twenty-four point seven existing to twenty-four percent. Whereas twenty-five percent is required. Right, it really, your, um, the advantage request is for one percent or a hundred and nine square feet of rear yard unoccupied. I just would like to go on a little bit, maybe come back, is that okay? I just want to show a little bit. So on the site, the intent is to is to build a new deck with a patio below and one of the ways that I was hoping to alleviate this added um, building coverage and also this reduction in rear yard unoccupied was to buffer the site on the left side of, at the face of the building, and then also on the right side to the property line, so that you couldn't see into the rear yard. The rear of the property itself is actually very well buffered. And I just want to go to an exhibit here, I guess I'll mark as mine A one. There's photos of the site that I took, um, about three months ago. And if I start on my, the, the, um, the board is really four photos of the existing site. And my A photo, I just want you to see the gap that occurs between the two houses, it's relatively wide. The, you know, especially for the R six zone, the gap on the left side there is about eleven feet to the property. And then the neighbor is about another ten feet, it's actually a pretty good gap there. Remember, this is the R six, it's really only required to be eight feet. And I'm suggesting that we plant that area right there with green giants so that I lose this alleyway. I don't know if you had a chance to go by and saw the alleyway and as it, how it goes downhill. I could buffer that so that I could prevent that view also, like, I think helpful to the streetscape. Then if I come to my photo B, the same situation is occurring on the right side. And that's where I wanted to again put green giants back on the, back further on the face of the building to the property line, so that I can remove that sort of visual alleyway and, um, stop my deck at all from being able to be seen as be detrimental to the streetscape. If I go to mine, the, if, well.
Are you gonna get to Tim as to whether the planting of those green giants are gonna impact the view from the adjacent properties? Or are they not?
No, they wouldn't impact.
This is just for the streetscape.
That's really.
Yes, okay.
Then if I look at my photo C, you can see our existing building on the left with the existing deck, the existing patio below and that same alleyway where I'm talking about planting just to enable to, or just to prevent this prevent you from visually seeing the deck from the streetscape, really all of this. My photo B is the back face of the property. And the back property line is very well uh, shrunk at this point, I think it doesn't really need anything to occur to protect. Shrugged at this point, I think it doesn't really need anything to occur to protect it from the neighbors behind. And then go. Back to my initial board. But what I was really saying is, I'm back on my BOA one sheet, I have planted. In this area on the right side and then over here on the left side so that I could buffer this. Buffer this deck addition from the street skate, really.
Just a question, you're gonna plant beginning where?
I planted on the left side, just looking at the site, I thought it looked the best to be back about eight feet off the face of the building. It just looked right, just looking at it.
The only comment is, green giants grow really big, you're gonna block that, but alleyway from the passage, you're not gonna be able to walk through.
Well, I think there's gonna be some passageway built into this.
Okay, it's up to you to consider, but just so you don't think it gets super large.
I've kind of decided between green giants or skip laurels, but everything seems kind of big on this, in this site. And that's why, that's what led me to go with the green giants. And then on the, on the right side, the same is occurring, but I pushed it way back here, just because I thought it looked better on the street.
Tim, I appreciate, I think we appreciate you putting granary there, but this, this, we'll be able to see this from the street, how does this?
From cypress.
Well, I, I think that you actually can see the deck from the street, between.
From cypress.
That's, that's the only reason why we're splitting it.
Did you mark?
Cypress, yeah, I feel like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cause I know I don't.
Oh, I, I'll call this, you're right, I, I better call this thing too. I'll link to it.
So Tim, can we just take a step back in terms of what the changes are, because I'm just trying to understand.
We did an eighty four.
So you added eighty four, so when I'm looking at BOA one, when I look at what seems to be proposed on the left hand side. It looks like on the right side of the gas fire pit, that is going to be part of the deck. And that doesn't currently exist, when you look at the drawings to the right or?
The deck is ending at the end of the curved space. The deck actually ends right at that.
Currently or will.
Proposed.
Okay.
It's, it is actually.
That's different on, than the drawing on the left, it looks like.
Oh, yeah, I guess it does, yeah, but it's ending right there, it's actually thirty four feet from the property line to where this circle is. The patio is ending basically at the building line, which is. About twenty six point three feet off of the park.
So what is the difference between the current?
The old stairway.
The nature deck.
The existing stairway of the deck is over on this, this side, on the right side, and the deck, the deck itself has been extended. To the right about, probably about. Three feet. So that.
Three feet from where?
From the existing point, the, I'm gonna say that the existing deck. I, I gotta just draw on this.
Was there any answer?
Okay, it's already existing, the existing deck is ending, I, I, I just.
You're drawing a line through the proposed fire pit area.
Yes.
To identify the, the location of the existing deck and how far it extends.
Because what's really happened here is we made the deck about a foot deeper, like the. This area that I'm kind of crosshatching.
So the crosshatch that you're putting on A two represents the additional deck area that does not currently exist.
That's the eighty four. Square feet of additional space.
So, so, just a question, if you're, you already have, first of all, an oversized lot and you have a. Pre-existing oversized deck, which you want to reconstruct, did you ever consider reconstructing it to make it conform?
Uh, we tried to make it conform, but we just couldn't fit the functions that we wanted to on the upper deck. The problem with the house is that, on the basement level, you can walk out, but they don't really want to function out of the basement, they wanna. They want the deck to be connected to the livable portion of this floor, so we're trying to get these functions up on, to the upper level in this place. So it's leading my deck to get eighty four square feet larger.
But to conform, can you reduce on the patio? If you're not, especially if you're not using it?
No, we could reduce the patio, but I don't.
Just to cover these.
Yeah, we could, we could easily reduce the patio, we can reduce, we could, we could cut. That area off of the.
Well, I guess the park is covered is the problem, but.
So as I, as I look at it, it doesn't. Seem to me to be in any way detrimental to the neighborhood.
Question, Tim, another question if I could interrupt.
Go ahead.
Has this property ever flooded? Myrtle?
We've been there, it might be a little pooling inside.
No. You, you don't know if it's ever flooded?
No, I mean, I think we've gone through two or three, you know, hundred year storms, happens every year.
Right.
Um, and we've had like maybe a little pooling in the basement, but nothing flooding.
You mean the yard?
Well, anywhere.
We have French plains in the yard.
And this will go through engineering?
Yeah.
No?
No, no, there's no new. Brown service.
So Tim.
Well, I guess it could go through.
Well.
There's nothing to move.
So we have an over, significantly oversized lot, and so this is not a, a C one Archel case per se. It's a C two, benefits originally outweighed the benefits, right? And so under, under C two, you have to demonstrate what are some purposes of zoning that are dealing with this. And that you're obviously also needing the negative criteria and that. The benefits substantially outweighed the detriment to the point where what is being proposed is a better zoning alternative for the property. So explain to the board why, even though it's only eighty four square feet. Why is the proposal here a better zoning alternative for the property as compared to existing?
Well, I, I, I think the addition of the shrubbery is beneficial to the neighborhood. To block this visual, this sort of alleyway between the two buildings. And I, I think that there's no detriment to the larger size of the patio itself or the deck, it's. It's actually only eighty four square feet, it's. Totally concealed behind the building, and I kind of do feel that the site has a hardship because of the grade. And the grade is forcing us to put a deck in that's at a high level, but if the grade was raised in the back of the property. You could literally like a regular house, just walk out the first floor onto a patio or onto a deck. That doesn't occur here because of the natural topography of the site.
But you can walk out the basement, Tim, right, so that is, so there's a walk.
Right, but it's a little bit awkward, I mean, the kitchen, all of, everything that occurs normally occurs on the first floor.
But I don't know what.
Well, I just mean, it's like to.
Are.
No, but you know what I mean, you'd like to live on the first floor, like if you're. Preparing meal, you walk from the kitchen through the eating area. Out to a deck or to a patio to sit outside, that doesn't occur here, you have to go downstairs, absolutely lives in a house like this one. It's a little bit, like, I'm gonna say very awkward, because you're constantly walking down a flight to. Walk outside pretty often.
But in this case, you do have a deck in which case you can walk out, but what you're saying, so.
We just want to make it a little bit larger so that he can have. All of the functions that he'd like to have on his desk, and that's, yes.
Can you explain, like, if you, I don't know if this grill is to scale, but like if you pulled that fire pit to the left. Five feet, I don't know, oh, would that? Would that solve your problem, would it not solve your problem? Would it be better, like, from a zoning perspective to not need to go over as much?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure it would. It's very close, five feet is very close to what we're asking.
I mean, it just, I'm, I'm having, I think we're, I, I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I think some of us may be having an issue with. The fact that you're rebuilding a deck, so you could build it however you want and it's already. And a non-conforming deck and now you're asking for an extension of something that's non-conforming when we're starting from scratch. And really the only positive criteria you could give us is that you're preventing some trees to, you know, like mask the view of it, but. I mean, but it's kind of like a self-imposed hardship because you're, you're the one creating that view by. Building a really large deck that is non-conforming.
Would you, you want to take a break, talk about this?
Yeah, sure.
Can we, can we take a break, move on?
To be fair.
Sure.
Yep.
So. What we're gonna do is that we're not gonna end the case, but you've asked for some time to speak to your client about the case. So we'll come back to the case, in the meantime, we'll move on to another application, keep this case open and circle to that.
Thanks.
Wow.
Oh.
I think they're putting a big screen TV in my house.
That's spiffy.
Did you bring that in your car? Where did I come from?
What is that?
Oh, this is.
Yeah, I guess it's their next thing.
Yeah.
I feel like we're on target.
You might have to.
I want to be part of it. I.
Oh, not me, I think.
We're really appreciating the power of your voice. Yeah, what happened to that typical fight?
Yeah.
There you are.
Go find it.
Yeah, okay.
We had Starbucks.
Yeah, yeah, right. Yeah, just like a word. No. No, oh, okay, oh, okay, yeah, okay, so just you?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Just you.
Okay.
Hi, my name is. Raise your right hand, you swear upon testimony about giving tonight's proceeding due to truth, hold true, none but the truth?
Yes.
Just the unit for the record.
Val, Louis, D H A O M U R.
Right.
Great, thank you all for, yes, I appreciate it, know that it's, it's late Monday night, so I'll try to be, uh, brief and to the point. Um, so I've been a resident for, in, in Milver and Short Hills for, for over two years now. Yeah, my son goes to Milver High School, love the area, yeah, thank, you know, you know, there's a, a lot of great things happening, like the town trip. Uh, so I had purchased twenty eight Glen Avenue about a year ago, I started a property that. Yeah, lovely neighborhood, it's right across from, but. Uh, you know, great location, obviously great explorer there, uh, the existing property itself. Uh, you know, it's completely desired, um, it's, the, the lot is on a corner line, uh, ten thousand two hundred square feet. The property itself is nine hundred sixty square feet, which in that quarter, um, hasn't been maintained, doesn't really fit the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Um, so, you know, I had to intend to, uh, to, uh, to update the property, uh, and I think it has a lot of potential. Uh, I, I hired an architect and engineer to develop plans, uh, submitted the original application in, uh, April the first of this year. Went through the process, um, you know, through zoning, fire, building, went through the whole process. And, you know, we were at the, literally at the last step for, uh, you know, just issuance of the, the permit and I was at the building department just looking at some. Old maps, just read and, uh, you know, discovered that there was a, um, storm water pipe that is literally going through the middle of it. Uh, you, you would not know that is there, uh, uh, you know, it's, uh, you would think that stormwater drains typically go. Straight down this way, side of the street, um, and, uh, but, for whatever reason, when it was designed. Um, uh, the, the stormwater drain, it was a, it's a three, a thirty six inch, um, uh, street drain that goes diagonally across.
It's underground, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's underground, uh, it's approximately seven and a half feet underground, so I had my, um, contractor, Davis Molto, just to verify that. It's actually at that spot, um, so you may have seen that, um, so, um, so after we saw that, you know, fortunately. It was before we got the permit, before we started construction, so maybe it was a good thing that we discovered it, uh, because, you know, got the data. Construction happened and that type of, and, you know, that would be huge, um, so, um, so we tried and. And that original application was without many variants, um, it was under, um, you know, all zoning, building codes. Never had any intention of really coming in front of you all. We tried to be really creative in terms of, okay, so how can we work around, uh, you know, this hardship? Uh, you know, when we purchased the property, there was no reference to, uh, you know, that, uh, there's no easements that we could find. Uh, wasn't obvious, wasn't on tax records, um, you know, and, and so, you know, it was, um, you know, obviously a really big surprise. Um, so, with that said, we tried to be creative in finding solutions around it, uh, I had numerous conversations with Martha and the engineer to say, hey, you know, can we. You know, build around it, um, you know, and Martha's perspective was, well, you know, she just didn't feel comfortable approving something where you would kind of feel about. So, um, uh, if it was an application.
Would you just answer when you determined it, is it active? It doesn't have it on any mapping?
It's not ours, I believe, it's, right, it's.
Oh, that's right, I was just getting confused.
Uh, the, um.
The, the storm, the pipe.
I don't think it's.
I think it is.
Like, because it didn't appear on any of the tax maps.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yes, I know tax maps and so, um.
It wasn't in your title work, there's no.
Nothing, 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 I mean, it wasn't on the, um, the township tax, like easements or anything, right?
How did you discover them, how, how did you discover it?
I was just a know-it-all at the building department, literally, and just asking a lot of questions because I was just thinking ahead. About, you know, things to do, um, just thought that I really understood the site and I was literally in front of Martha's computer. And she pulled up, uh, a, a, a map and I looked at the map and I asked Martha, what is that line right? And Martha told me, well, that's a storm sewer line.
So it was somewhere, but it wasn't, it's not, you know.
Yeah, and, and, and so that, I mean, like, you know, if I wasn't in front of Martha's computer and if she didn't pull it up, never would have known, right? So, um, so I, so I asked the title companies to do some additional digging, said, you know, why did this come up in any surveys? So they did further, uh, digging and they found, um, uh, a, a record going back to over a hundred years, nineteen fifty. Uh, when nothing was built, it was like just bare line, and there was just a reference to the railroad company creating that, um, you know, that, uh, you know. Doing a survey and creating that drain. doing a survey and creating that drain. And it was, it was purchased like that. Like, like literally it's a one dollar to, uh, you know, for that easement underground to create that, uh, you know, a thirty-six inch storm drain over a hundred years.
Wow.
Um, so, you know, took some digging to figure that out. Um, so, you know, with that said, you know, my perspective was, look, you know, it's, um, you know, it's, you know, stuff like that happen, it is what it is, and so how can we figure out a solution, and I tried creative solutions. I'm, well, can we build something around it, is sufficient access? You know, just trying to be creative, thinking outside the box. And, um, Martha wasn't, didn't feel comfortable approving anything because she didn't want to block the liability that she. So I understand that. So, so practically, it's a very large lot, but, but it's boxed in because the existing property is in the corner. Um, and the pipe, as you can see in the picture, cuts across the entire, like diagonally across the property, not like straight in a, um, you know, nice figure, it's, it's literally cutting across the property, so.
While you're on that, the other person at this room that's seen this map, um, it runs through your property, and I know that the neighbor along Cypress, uh, this house is closer to the street. Where, based on the map, where does this storm sewer line end?
Yeah, so, so there's like a little ditch where the storm drain goes, um, through two other properties and into like the little ditch and just runs off.
Okay.
Yeah, like, yeah, it's where the train tracks are, and it goes like under the, yeah, right? So, so like I was like, so, so I literally walked, you know, um, down the train track, and I like went in and like looked in the sewer pipe, and like I put a light just to see like, is it like really straight? You know, just, you know, if I visually like saw where the manhole is, like where I'm at the pipe, you know, at the gutter, you know, like at the little ditch where, where the wire runs off, and there's water coming out, um, and it's literally a straight pipe, uh, and it's, um, and was built literally like, uh, you know, between my house and my neighbors. And nobody knew that that existed. I spoke to the, my, my neighbor to my left, who actually used to live in that house before he purchased the neighboring house, he had no idea that was there. Um, uh, and, you know, the, the neighbor, other neighbor right behind me, she had no idea there's a pipe going right through her property. So, um, so we tried to find a solution, it wasn't a solution to work around it. Um, and so just given, you know, where the pipe runs through, the shape of the lot, like the, the existing property is literally wedged in the corner. The only way to, um, uh, you know, to develop a si- a, a property that it's fitting for that size of the lot would be to build a pool. So, um, yeah, so I'm requesting, so the first variance is really just to increase the front setback. Um, so by regulation, um, I'm allowed to build up to thirty-one feet, which is the average front setback, uh, relative to the neighboring houses. Um, you know, that isn't a ton of room. Um, my neighboring houses, uh, to the left too, their front setbacks are about twenty-seven feet. Uh, so I'm requesting front setback of twenty-three, twenty-two. Um, so, you know, it's a little bit closer to them, but really no closer to any other property that would intrude on anybody because across the street, it's flaming hot. So it's not really impacting anything, you, you wouldn't even know it with the naked eye relative to, you know, the, my neighbor, uh, houses, because they're at twenty-seven. So I'm requesting twenty, which is, uh, you know, front setback so that I can build forward because that's the only direction that, you know, the, the property.
This front setback that you're mentioning in Milburn, it's undershued, it says thirty-two feet, you said thirty-one?
Yeah, uh, what's, um, allowed, so that's the average setback?
All right, so it's, it's prevailing and it could be the average of the.
Yeah, yeah, prevailing, yes, the prevailing is thirty-one.
Do you, did you do that yourself, or did it's somebody that you hired?
No, the engineer.
Is there a reason he's not here to help?
Because I'm able to do it.
Who knows?
You know, put it over.
Well, you didn't prepare that. Prevailing setback, you didn't take those calculations.
Yeah, they, they didn't do their calculations, I mean, you know, I, you know, they stamped the, um, survey, and, you know, that's, that is prevailing setback, yeah.
So, so typically what happens that we hear testimony, we heard in the last application, you know, the, the second, the first application and the second one, from a professional, whether it's an architect, an engineer, professional planner in support of variances. And when applicants present plans to us that you're seeking approval for, that involve, as always is the case for our board, set, uh, variances. In your case, for front yard setback, for height, uh, for the patio in the front yard, um, they provide testimony supporting their plans as to why they did the things where they did. They are subject to questions from the board and from members of the public. And that forms the foundation for the proofs that the board needs to assess in what's called the positive and negative criteria for variance rule.
Sure.
So, you know, typically we don't have a property owner, and, and you're just, actually, the property owner's twenty-eight Glen Avenue LLC, you're just the principal of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
No, but I'm saying, but the, there's another rule technically that says that if there's a corporation who's the applicant, they have to be represented by counsel. This board has historically, as long as the principal of the LLC is, is presenting, they're presenting as the developer and not as the property owner, and so we let that typically slide under certain circumstances. But here, you don't even have any professionals who prepared the plans that the board is reviewing here to, you know, to present testimony and be answered questions.
Yeah, so the, um, uh, the engineer that did the calculations, they're not here, but obviously they certified the survey. Uh, the architect, um, they're not here, but this is prepared by, by the architect, um, and it's stamped, right? So, uh, you know, the, uh, plan services and staff, um, you know, has prepared by the, um, and I'm the owner of the property, it's not like, um, you know, it's a large corporation or anything like that, it's just me.
I mean, are we would they allow to hear an applicant, like, like, can they answer?
No, because the, the applicant.
Or is that going to all of the, the same?
The, the applicant did not prepare the plans. And so typically, an applicant who submits plans sealed inside plans, like they did appropriately, okay? But they have their professionals available to provide testimony and answer questions because it needs to be a quantum of proof presented to the board for the board to assess whether, again, positive and negative criteria has been met. Here you have an over, again, you have an oversized lot. So, um, you know, whether the board is going to consider the, the sewer line as a hardship, right? Um, I, I will tell you that under, under a C one, hardship has to do with the actual land itself and not necessarily any structures that are, you know, on the land, although they, the, the board could find certainly that sewer line represents and presents a hardship for the applicant. But I don't know what the applicant is gonna, gonna present, and don't know whether it's, they want to do a C one and a C two. You have a height variance, and typically for a height variance, you're gonna have questions with the architect. Um, you have a different style house certainly, um, compared to the neighborhood. And typically, you'd be asking the architect questions about that and how it fits with the neighborhood in relation to the negative criteria for both the front yard setback variances as well as the height factors. Um, so, thanks.
So I, I, what our, what our board attorney is saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we as a board are gonna have questions for you, but you can't give us the answers, we need professionals to give us the answers. Um, just legally, we're not allowed to have you be the one to give us the, the answers. Even if you think you know the answers, we can't take what you're saying, um, and, and, and consider it as part of our decision. Um, so I, I don't see how we could continue, um, this. Uh, there, there are just too many questions that we're gonna have, and, and unfortunately, we don't give us the answers.
Yes, so I appreciate the point, I mean, on, on like the legality point of, of answering question, I mean, I would presume that as a homeowner, and it is my.
No, in fact, you didn't make your, what I said, what I said was that you have this property titled in LLC, the liability, okay? There's a rule, New Jersey rule, that you're a corporation, that the corporation needs to appear by an attorney, okay? Now, this board provides, on my advice, has provided exceptions to that where the principal of the LLC is gonna present themselves as the quote-unquote developer, not necessarily the owner, right, the individual. So we, we let that slide, however, as the chair said, that every applicant is required to provide signed and sealed plans in support of their application. And they always present their architect, their planner, their engineer, whoever presented and prepared the plans. They can testify as to the plans, this is why I did what I did. These are my plans, I'm available to answer questions about the plans that I created, I prepared. Because you didn't, you're, you paid for the plans certainly, but because you didn't prepare the plans yourself, you cannot be questioned by the board to get the answers as to, and, for example, in Milburn, there's a prevailing front yard setback requirement, where you have to make, take measurements, okay? You didn't make those measurements.
Right.
Right? So we need to be able to hear from the person who took those measurements, we can ask questions because you're asking for a front yard setback. And similarly, whoever created the architectural plans, the elevations for the height, they need to be present to answer questions as to the whys and wherefores, as to why does the height need to exceed? What is the maximum, uh, permitted in the zone?
Right, so, um, so my response to that is, um, the question on the measurements, the engineer would just say, yeah, I did it, and, and it's stamped and approved, right? I mean, these are signed, sealed documents that the engineer or the architect have done, so.
They would be considering that, you know, if he gave that answer. The, any expert needs to provide the whys and the wherefores and explain why he or she put something on the plans. Can't just say, well, I sealed it, so here, this is my plan, that's the answer. So that's unacceptable answer from a professional, they'd have to explain, this is how I created the measurement that led to the prevailing setback, this is what I did. These are the homes I looked at, these are the setbacks that I, that I looked at to create this.
Right, I mean, it's like saying, you know, how to use a rule, right? But, I mean, literally it is like that, I mean, because it's a calculation that they did and they're licensed to do it.
I, I think that, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I, we can't go back and forth with, I understand that you're not happy about this, but we as a board can't, we, we have to follow the law, you know what I mean? So, I, it, despite what your opinion is, we, we need to go by the advice of our board attorney, um, and you, you don't have anyone here who can answer the questions that, that we have, so we can't continue the application tonight. Um, you know, I'm sorry.
So, so if I were to switch it from, um, the LLC to my own name, is that, would that matter at all? I, I would still need both the engineer and the architect just to say, this is how I help with.
What, what, what you, what you would do, my, the advice, is that you list three professionals on your application, right? You, you have an a- an architect, an engineer, and a restoration company. These plans were created by RA Design Consultants.
Right.
Okay? You should have the person from RA Design Consultants who prepared these plans, they're all signed and sealed.
Yeah.
This person should appear at the, at a, at a future meeting with you to provide testimony in support of the application.
So would you need only the architect, or would you need all three of them?
My, it's up to the applicant how they want to present their application. My advice is that at a minimum, you need the architect. It doesn't seem like, well, although you do have this, this sewer line issue, but, but absolutely you would need the architect to provide testimony in support of these plans that the board had revealed.
Okay, so, would there be, so a question to the board, would there be any issue to only bringing the architect? Would there be a requirement to, uh, you know, have a surveyor say, I did these calculations according to our survey, what you proposed?
So, because the architect placed the survey and the si- and this, this plot plan on, on his or her plans, they would be able to testify to it?
Utilizing the surveyors?
No, they, they signed this plan.
Yeah.
That, and their, their plan on sheet Z one hundred includes this.
Yeah.
Right? So, that's what they would be as a professional, there's licensure and regulations in the state of New Jersey as to what engineers can testify to, what architects can testify to, and an architect can testify, not, I can't. You can't, but the architect can testify to what they have on their plan. And there's regulations as to what they are allowed to include on their plan.
Okay. Because it's their paper that they put on it so they can testify. Okay, yeah, I mean, obviously, if I had known, I would have arranged it. Um, you know, but I understood that, that wasn't necessary, so I was incorrect in that assumption. Right, uh, I mean, you know, the, the ask, you know, with the hardship, you know, doesn't seem like unusual, um, nothing that's unreasonable, um, but, but I guess we just need someone that just, under my direction, that said, this is the design and the architect put on a paper, but you just need the architect to say, yeah, I did it.
Well, we'd like to question the architect about a number of things that are here and that. One of which is the, the elevations that he prepared, which is fair to prepare, so yes, we'd probably like to speak to the architect. And I think one suggestion that might be helpful, if you can get a copy of the map that, that you spoke to Martha about, that would be a great handout for us.
Yeah, I got it, I thought it is, yeah, I got the copy of my map, but it's with me, so.
Did you, do you recall when you saw the older map? Was there any, what I'm gonna call like a dotted line, there's dashed line surrounding the sewer line? And the reason why I'm, I'm mentioning that is that very often, when utilities are created by way of easements or, or tax map or otherwise, there is in, in an area that you're not allowed to go within, so in other words, if the sewer line is only three feet wide.
Yeah, it's fifteen feet from the center line.
But what is?
It's, it's fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, so, okay, so.
It's a seven and a half on the other side of center.
How did you know that it was fifteen feet?
Because I had stated earlier that I asked the title company to do digging to find a document from over a hundred years ago.
Did you make a claim to your title insurance company for that?
I haven't got yet.
I think you should reach to a land use attorney, that's just me speaking as a normal person.
Yeah, I'm not a litigious person, so, you know.
Yeah, that's okay, but, but, but what would be helpful as requested is if you can bring in what your title company got for you from nineteen fifteen or, or what have you, just so that it's in the record that in fact, there was this old map that included the sewer line.
Yeah, so I, so I did provide that as part of the application, I provided the easement afterwards from over a hundred years ago.
In an apartment?
No, no.
I didn't say, I didn't say. Okay.
It was in the physical copy I was required to, um. Yeah, it was, it was posted, so you should have.
Okay.
Quick question for, uh, we're not swabbing, maybe I, probably, I think. Um, so when an applicant comes to, and they, uh, or said they want to come in front of the board because an application was denied, is there any way to advise them on the professionals they should bring with them? I feel bad for you, you're here, and you made the statement that you didn't know, and you would have probably brought somewhere, I do know. Is there any way to advise someone that they can, that they should bring some professionals with them?
Well, they asked, I, I wasn't aware of all of this myself, so, um, of course, I saw who was listed, so I was.
It's, it's not the first time, it's happened, it doesn't happen that often, but it's not the first time since I've been on this board that somebody didn't know that they should bring professionals with them.
We do occasionally have people that we tell, but they insist they can do it themselves.
But is there any way to sort of like uniformly say, you may need to bring some professionals with you to help your case, especially?
I typically do tell people, there's D variants, real plan, or that kind of thing.
And and and, but I mean, it's right that when an applicant, there's they, there's a listing on the application form. Who's your architect, who's your, and and look, if there's no, excuse me, D variants, they often don't bring a plan, which is fine. But usually, the person who prepared the plans that you're seeking approval for should be you.
Okay, I don't know that that's general knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, I guess your key word is usual, but if not, it's listed in the instructions that you should bring.
So maybe something we can talk about.
I mean, this, you know, this is like not the forum, the forum for it, so, um, so what we're gonna do now is ask Eileen, um, are you able to?
Well, not listening to our best, yeah. We, because we're not meeting on the twenty second, right? Yeah, not setting on it, and it's early.
Espalda Palager.
Yeah, so I think the best we probably could be carrying it through twelve, that's when you are meeting, um.
Could there be, or is there such process as, you know, if if there are questions submitted, I can have the architect provide a signed sealed response?
You need to be able to push, so they have to be here.
So we carry it through twelve.
Up to anywhere?
I don't know if we can hear it, because there's a lot from the, from the, from the.
But I mean, there's a way to know in advance, just so he doesn't come back with an architect and we can't even hear the case that, you know, I'd love to give the privacy of.
Do you think you'd have enough time between now and then to?
Yeah, I mean, you know, if I had known, the architect would have came, like, he he even told me he would happily come because of the hardship. And like, you'd like, he easily could have came if I wouldn't have, so, and there's.
He should have done, if you're discussing with him, he shouldn't have just have got a slammed up hardship.
It was, it was nothing about being a slam dunk or not, it was more about a necessity where the need is.
Maybe we can settle up through twelve and carry it that night, and then we'll do that.
Yeah.
That was our commercial application, it's like, yeah, we have to grab a room.
Yeah, anyway.
Yeah.
That is where it's currently, because we adopted that date last year, so it's to be here.
Okay, so, oh.
Okay, so we are going to carry this matter to January twelve. We will presumably come back with your architect and anyone else, uh, you, you, you know, deemed appropriate to um to testify. And that's without further notice, right? And it will be at this location, the um Ed Center. So anyone?
Four thirty four Milburn.
Four thirty four, oh, I'm sorry, four thirty four Milburn Avenue, um, and that'll be on January twelfth of twenty twenty five.
Yes.
So, oh my god, twenty forty six, okay. Um, I'm sorry for, you know, you got to know those names.
No, I mean, it's hard to waste your time as well and having to, you know.
You didn't waste your time because you heard the application go, which is good. So the board, the board's aware of what's happening now with the sewer line and that's important.
Yeah, I mean, it's just in, you know, like, there's, you know, we saved a little bit of time, but like, I mean, you know, it's just starting to pick up your third.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, yeah, we're, because because we, because um, Neil Mino is referring this matter, you're gonna go last, but this way, Neil Mino doesn't need to stay.
You want to what?
You just wanna push, like, you know, for a month.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, push for a month, because I don't have anything available.
I went for a push.
Yeah, see you sometime, I don't know.
Can they do either?
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on.
I'll stay, I can stay for it.
No, 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 what, you can certainly carry it. But I just wanna make sure for the record that we're carrying it to potentially a date certain, so that they don't have to renotice.
Or we would have to carry it to January twelfth for scheduling purposes, or and then we. We don't have our needs yet.
And that'll be January twelve, just for scheduling.
Just for scheduling.
Oh, so we can watch it then.
Okay.
That's, that's good.
Okay, so, so we're carrying, um, calendar. Can't read the way they want it, or four zero five, five, five two, twenty five, that's seventy eight Myrtle Avenue. We're carrying it with no further notice to January twelfth, twenty twenty six. Um, and that is for scheduling purposes only, so we will not be hearing it that night. We will just be figuring out the date that it will. Okay, we're gonna move on to calendar four zero five four dash twenty five, the property location is three hundred and five way.
Just raise your right hand, please, Dan. Do you swear from ten twenty, I take evidence next to seeing to be the truth, all truth, not the truth?
I did.
You just state your name, sir.
Um, Stuart Tenkenbaum. We're not three hundred and five way. In the town, but with point thirteen minutes. I've been seeing how that works, and I moved over to find, uh, for twenty six years. Love the neighborhood. I raised a child, I think in school district, liked a very big college. We are changing the backyard to basically redesign the patio so that it looks nice, for added value. Neighborhood and actually gave it re-space, uh, from what we said before. And. Also extend the house to an open island in the kitchen which, kitchen for a small area. That house is an area.
Okay. Thank you.
Give us your qualification.
Daniel DuBene, uh, license card says, um, I received my license in two thousand and one. I've been back soon, give them, primarily residential design exam, and I would prefer this floor. It was time to give my license, uh, with, so, so good. And I, credentials are, math is degree of architecture, undergraduate degree, university math is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this application, we are seeking one variance for rear yard unoccupied. And the the goal is um to restructure um Stuart's backyard. Uh, we recently, you know, to see, we just did a kitchen renovation. And we moved some pliers and changed the floor of the backyard. And we've been planning this, obviously, to to come before you. And the application is that it's existing non-conforming at the moment, we're gonna bring it closer to conformly. We'll make it a hundred and fourteen square feet better than it is today. We'd say a hundred and fourteen, hundred and fourteen square feet of more wholeness space. So rear yard unoccupied is a little bit of a brain teaser, meaning we seek big numbers. It's often better, sometimes you see building covered, you see a big number, but okay, that's not good. Rear yard unoccupied, what they want is twenty five percent of your lot to be open in the rear yard. So we have a a lot that's a little bit larger than the minimum required. Minimum was six thousand, we're about eight thousand, seven hundred. So that having a bigger yard requires it now a bigger rear yard unoccupied. And what happens with this property is his existing home, that's why I think it's C, uh, C one hardship. Parents, um, comes with the play because of the existing location of the home on the property. So he's got a relatively shallow backyard. And the other thing that that really hurts us is the driveway and the orientation of the garage on the property. So they have to drive down the side of their property, make a U-turn and get to their garage. We loved trying to solve that, which was an option, but it was a big option because it was a mudroom. There were things in the way from just turning it to a front basic garage. So we kind of felt that um that was, well, if we didn't have the driveway, we wouldn't be here, because we have our patio and the space. And we're roughly, just in terms of numbers, uh, twenty percent. So you're supposed to keep twenty five percent open, result would be that it'd be twenty percent open. The number is one, seven, five, one, one nine five. And it results in a, a lot of, a rear yard that's four hundred and twenty four square feet, uh, that we should have more open. The the driveway portion, I calculated, was about five hundred and fifty. So it's clearly that the driveway is our hardship to allow them to have a nice patio. If we were planning on something that was about fourteen by twenty three. And we reduced, so I think we made some good positive changes to the neighbors and the neighborhood. We're we're pulling the driveway that is awfully wrong, it's it's out of line there.
Okay, let's, wait, wait, wait. So, are any, are any of these um colored drawings submitted to the board?
No, that what you have would.
So so why don't we mark, Dan, how do you wanna, how do you wanna mark it? Do you wanna mark that one slide?
I'd like to mark A one with two slides, and then get to the second part if I can, it's got just a series of progress.
Okay, so so this is A, A one, it, well, that looks like three slides, no?
No, we're, we're two.
No, 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 but I'm saying, we're gonna, A, A one's gonna be, um.
What is that?
Recycle lands.
Recycle lands.
Yeah.
Is that a sheet number? B four?
B one.
And I can get a sheet B one at some point.
And we'll, we'll be at this B one, so.
No, 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 but, 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 but Dan, Mr. DuBene, you agree to submit to Ms. David um hard copies of both A one and A two, we'll get to that, thank you.
Can I also just get um clarification about something? Did you say that it's, that that it was pre-existing non-conforming that you're making better?
Yes.
But on the atta- attachment F, it says that the existing is twenty five percent.
Yes, so we went to.
Maximum allowed is twenty five percent.
Thank you for that, thank you. Existing was over, and then as we were planning this, uh, we realized we had a rear yard patio. So uh, to get this edition done before the winter, my suggestion is like, let's design this things. Because we would, we'd be, oh, we need a variance with the process we've been preparing, so, so we're working. Uh, I guess kind of, my advice is that let's get this built. And we can reduce the driveway and have a conforming, that's what the second slide is of this day mostly. First one is existing, then when we did our proposed addition, if we eliminate the patio, reduce the driveway. That's a conforming, no variance rear yard, but no patio. So, uh, thank you for that. And then the next slide is, okay, well, now we put back a patio, increase the driver for functioning. So we kind of came up with a conforming to be able to get this kitchen in, now here to ask for that.
The difference between number two, the middle number two and the end number three are also extending the driveway, right? He's a roll.
We'll make it deeper, but let's say you were said, okay, well, we we can't grant you a rear yard.
Can you move just a little bit to the?
We have the board.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you can see.
Yeah, the three of us are.
Keep going, keep going.
Okay.
That's what it says.
Wonderful.
So, so Dan, I'm, Dan, I'm, I'm B one at the bottom of the table. So it says rear yard unoccupied eighteen point eight currently, going to sixteen, which could make it worse. Are those numbers just not right?
Uh, where am I, am I rear yard unoccupied here, this line?
Yes.
Right, uh, should be correct, so existing and.
You have so many different quotes.
Oh, that's what I had in mind.
That's the, that's definitely.
But that's also different from attachment.
The drawing, but the table is different.
Yeah. Uh, where's the table? Uh, it's stuck in cheese.
There, on here, yeah.
Yeah, I saw it.
So, so could you give us the numbers, just so we're all working with the same basic, how much it says?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Existing is twenty five percent and the maximum is twenty five percent, so another thing, eighteen, whatever again.
Well, we just think currently, because we made it conform more to give this permanent to be a difference. So existing is currently twenty five percent.
Without any patio, you're saying?
Correct, because they removed a lot of patio.
Wait, is it eight, is it twenty five or is it eighteen point eight?
I think it was eighteen point eight, you reduced it to twenty, you made it twenty five in order to get the permits to give the kitchen. They reduced a lot of patios, and currently it is twenty five, and it's making it twenty, we'll make forty percent down.
So I'm just, yes, sorry, I'm very slow on me, but, so what you're looking for today is uh, rear, uh, unoccupied of sixteen percent, forty square feet.
No, I'm looking for, he's looking for a deviation of four hundred and twenty four square feet off of what is required. Yes. Right, but but then explain where the one hundred and fourteen square feet improvement comes from. Yeah, so that's kind of doesn't really, let's say.
That doesn't work, doesn't work, no.
Doesn't work, and and you're right, it doesn't work. And I guess I went to his house and it's still there, so you think it could, no. If this board said, no, you can't have it, well, then we would wind up with uh what we see here, this is it. Number two.
That's currently what's existing.
What we gotta prove for it.
Right.
Like, obviously, to think it worked.
Why don't you get a car and, please turn it around.
Well, we we, uh, it's tight, and he hasn't used the garage unfortunately because of all the turning that has to be done, even with what's, we've got a chance to see if that's what's there today. It's awkward situation. But and with the proposal, if it's acceptable, the board will be at twenty three feet, which is, I think, is good. If, if, if someone wants to put in, they, pardon the ride.
So you wanna pull the drive back so the board will?
Yes. And then if I may, just to give you some context of, well, we already talked a little bit about how the oversized lot actually princesses the existing house being pushed back. More, most importantly, is is the hardship of the, of the location of the garage. Uh, but then what I think helps our application even further is, these are some images that I took.
Okay, hold on, we, we go with A one?
Yes.
No, this is all part of A one.
I would think so.
No, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna mark the, the photos, A two.
So explain what A two is.
A two is a series of progress I took um last week, a reflect of the conditions of the house. Uh, so the first slide, obviously, this is from the, from the, you see the, the existing driveway. Then we get to the back, this, Jimmy, can you just go back to to the first slide for a second? On your, on the plan.
On your, on the plan, it shows a fifteen foot easement.
Mm-hmm.
That straddles, I guess, the property to the north and your property.
Yes.
Explain what that is.
Uh, it doesn't say what kind of easement, uh, proportionally, Stuart, do you know what?
It's a drainage, isn't it?
Long water change? Yeah, we got this some. Fifteen easement.
Okay, are you, I mean, I'm just looking, it looks like that the. Are there any improvements that are being proposed within that easement area?
No, they were both blacked out.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Um, so the sign is very well screened. One of the things we'd like Stuart to testify to is that he would maintain the landscape that's there and the records. So basically, they planted um, these evergreens, not too old, those decked features are probably broke, double in height, but by the state. Uh, and the same thing on the right side, which is heavily well screened. So it's a boy to be a very private backyard. To negatively impact anybody by having a patio right outside the sliders. That side was very well screened from the neighbors and that it's hitting the reasons that there'd be a negative impact, it's resulted in this, obviously, positive for Stuart's family.
That if.
Yeah.
Um. Um, did we, does anyone from the board have questions?
So just to clarify, so what what are you asking for?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What specifically you wanna change if I'm asking?
We would like to be able to have a patio fourteen by twenty-three. Close to the house, it would be a platform that steps down to the patio. And then be able to expand the driveway uh, like this four feet, which will yield us twenty-three feet in case someone did wanna access that driveway.
But that gray, yeah, the gray areas.
The patio will be pavers.
And the the gray area you're taking, you would be taking away that part?
I'm gonna add.
Oh, you're adding that too?
Cause you're right, you're right, it's like, okay, well, you kinda.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, the proposed rear yard unoccupied will be twenty percent.
Twenty percent.
And existing is fifteen?
The existing, which is confusing, the existing is conforming.
I like what you involved.
It brought it to a point.
How about the ten, like the three year ago existing, what was that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was big, that was uh, eighteen, so it was larger.
That's why I said.
For worse. So the whole thing was great and I wish we did, had done this before we did vacations. Normal, but then there was a urgency, yeah. You know how it goes.
So so really, I mean, you are reducing or you're you're increasing the amount of unoccupied from before you started all these projects.
Reducing, reducing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's less of a deviation from when I started that project.
That's just not reflected in here.
It's not reflected. Right, I didn't want to, and I started my presentation the wrong way, which is, okay, we have a conforming lot, it's not great, no patio.
Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the audience with any questions? Anyone in the audience with any comments?
One last question.
Yeah.
On the the right side of the image, the like part of lot sixteen. Can you just clarify, is that just, the lot is just the part of, can we just confirm the lot line and why the green is in, which looks like it shouldn't be? I just need to clarify what is the lot.
Uh, well, for sure, this is our A lines. I don't know if it's a result of some older subdivision, but do Stuart, do you know anything about that?
I have no idea what that is.
Is it possible it's the old file path lot number?
I think this is.
Yeah, because of the.
This is our property.
Just that property line, yeah.
But then there's this swath of space that shows up in the lots. But actually, the lot is twenty-five, so that's all.
Yeah, this is just old number, I guess.
Yeah.
So the the larger crap is always there, it's the lot.
Yes. But you can see from that, you know, how much front yard we have, so and and kind of best backyard.
Okay, I'm confused, I'm sorry, cause it was up to you like last night during the concert. So then if if it's twenty-five percent, it's twenty-five percent allowed, what are we asking for? No, this is.
Now, now they're at, it's currently twenty-five, they wanna go to twenty.
You think it's twenty?
They wanna reduce the amount of unoccupied.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Cause they wanna both patio and expand the garage.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, it was the inverse, got it, thank you for. And this lot is oversized?
Yes.
And is there a margin?
Yes, cause that's bizarre, but that having a lot.
The position of the house.
I did a calculation, there were six thousand square feet, we wanted to get variance for or whatever we had, we did before.
I think twenty-five percent of that would be. So the the larger lot actually. Weird, yeah.
No more questions? None from the audience, no comments, uh, any comments from board members?
Yeah, I have comments, I think it was made confusing because it felt like a two-step process.
Yeah.
So I think I understand now and yeah, part of me is like saying, well, like you knew where you were going, you should have done the process the the right way, but I think, I understand, I appreciate the hardship, I do see the shape of the property, right? The front yard is larger and wider and thus to get the percentage in the backyard can be hard. And I could appreciate the testimony about the garage we were facing, but I think it felt.
Yeah, we should, I will come up on that, I agree entirely with that, it's built a little too out of sorts and I mean, it's a pretty good number.
Yes, I agree.
That being said, I do like the rear-facing garage, pretty much parodying that. Uh, we maintain that rear-facing garage, because I think we get a lot of front-facing garage lately. Um, but you, and the other factor is that compared to the existing three years ago, you are creating more unoccupied now, so I think.
And I think sometimes we um, make suggestions of like, well, why don't you cut off a little bit of the driveway or a little bit of this? Like there, there is nothing here that you can cut off to still, you know, from the driveway. You know, perspective where you, where you would be able to get a car into that garage. So um, you know, that's not an option and I think that there's definitely a hardship here. Um, so I think to mark this application, even though it was done in a kind of roundabout way. Um, would someone like to make a motion?
Don't move.
A second.
Jerry Rosen?
Yes.
Do you enjoy it?
Yeah.
That's the wall?
Yes.
And then you know, Robinsons?
Yes.
Are you going to?
Yes.
To the portal?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry about that.
But. But this one.
Thanks. I guess that's why.
Yeah, so. Want to try.
Which is kind of near.
All right, well, who's ever checked?
I was sure.
Who are from testimony about the given height receiving the true fault, are you a volunteer?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
If your names will start.
Timothy Klassen.
Rich Keller.
Casey Witten.
And Stephen Winter.
Thank you.
You can speak.
Thank you very much, um, good evening, my name is Stephen Winter, this is my wife Stacy. Um, really appreciate the work as you know. Uh, we've been homeowners in town for about six years. Uh, we have two kids, our daughter Emma is at Washington School and our son Gavin is seven years old. Uh, when we bought the house, we knew we probably wanted to put it full in one day. Um, and Gavin, I think a little bit older, we thought perhaps the right time. Uh, so we engaged Rich and Tim in the process to try to look through that project. Um, due to the way that our sort of backyard house is set up, uh, there's no real easy access to any bathrooms because we don't have a walkout basement and you start walking, you gotta kind of walk through everywhere. So we thought a good solution to that was sort of small cabana at the rear of the property. Um, have a bathroom and a changing room and chase into your pool. Um, and then we we spent quite a bit of time with Rich and his team over several months to try to reduce as great, greatest extent possible any variances. And so we kind of went through all that process. Um, and then the current plan that we have, we're left with a single request for building coverage variance, but I was hoping Rich could help address. And if the board has any questions for us, happy to answer them now or after the presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Rich Keller from Casey and Keller. I'll be presenting both as primarily the planner, but I'll also be answering any questions as engineer as well. I am a licensed engineering planner for the last thirty-five years. Here for this board, uh, planning board, about a hundred and ten boards for the state of New Jersey, about all their offering planning services. Uh, professionally to the Borough of Caldwell, planning board, board adjustment. Uh, I was the engineer for uh, the Borough of Long, so Tenshu of Long Hill for two years. My license is uh, it's affecting, so I was actually that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as indicated, um, this was, this was an interesting process and kind of the ones that we wanted best because it was a good client who didn't want to come through the board. And so um, we, let me just give you a little bit of information about the property. Um, the property itself is located on the uh, on the southeast Philly side of Troy Drive. It's about three hundred and sixty feet from Washington Avenue, which is, I'm sorry, from uh, from uh, Great Hills Terrace, which is to the, I'm sorry, what? Did I get that right? Yeah, about three hundred and sixty feet from Great Hills Terrace and about three hundred and sixty feet from Athens Road across on the other side of the street. The property is a hundred and fifty-two feet wide, hundred, sorry, a hundred and fifty-two feet wide, two hundred and eleven feet deep, approximately twenty-seven thousand eight hundred square feet. Uh, it's located only within the R four residential district where twenty thousand square feet required. So it is, again, an oversized lot, which is low. The um, the property slopes up in the rear from the rear of the house, it slopes up about eight feet to the to the profit, from the patio up to where the proposed um, cabana and um, covered patio cooler located. The property then continues uh, up grade to the properties that front on Great Hills Terrace. Uh, that's about another ten feet from back of our property to the rear of the houses, the front end of Great Hills. Overall, there's almost thirty feet of grade change from Troy up to uh, Great Hills Terrace behind us. Um, as indicated, this was kind of a, an architectural term, is a charrette process. Um, where the uh, they're dealing with a very good, well-known pool um, and hard cave contractor who, like all of them, designed something beautiful, had patios, it had um, offensive outdoor spaces. And we got it, it was overrun, building coverage, it was way over uh, over lot coverage, it was over our S three coverage. Uh, it was very close to going under on rear and occupied. And it was really not something that was ever gonna get through to anything. So uh, when we first got on the first Zoom call uh, with the clients, um, it was made very clear, we'd like to slim this down to not go over there. Clearly want pool, besides pool down, besides patio down, we'd like to not require variance. So we went through that process, probably through three different Zoom meeting while we were sort of designing on the computer at the same time. And we came up with a plan that's here for you today. We do need variance relief for building coverage, I'll point all about that. Um, but the uh, the basically, the existing yard is terrace, if you've been out there, there are two walls that um, come from the lower patio up into the rear yard. And if you go to the rear yard, it then continues up another about five, six feet uh, up to the back property. We elected to put the not uh, really change much of those retaining walls, we're adding on to them, make moderate, minor modifications. Um, we put the pool on the right side of the property, uh, more than the required twelve feet step back. Um, and then we um, to the rear of the property, we have a cabana, which is really a bathroom and a changing room. And I'll go over a little bit uh, of the architect's plans, Tim Pussi is here tonight, they talk about it in materials or some of the scale, talk about some of the height, so I think it's the most important thing, and then certainly Tim can answer any questions. The um, the, the placement here, um, the cabana, we go over the uh, the proposal. It's an eighteen by thirty-six pool, which is about six hundred and forty-eight square feet. Got a one for coping around it, on the left side, we have a ten foot, uh, uh, ten foot nine inch, ten foot eight inch, excuse me, patio. It gives way to an eight foot patio between the back of the pool and the um, changing room, bathroom, and then what's what's called proposed covered patio. And so the um, bias to the right, leaving the furthest away from neighbors on both sides. And it's also at the rear of the property, again, more than twelve feet, about fourteen, it's actually more, more than twelve feet to the uh, to the chimney, the main structure is about fourteen feet off the rear line. And we put that, we nestled it under retaining walls, so the back of the uh, the property is natural grade and we're able to hunker that uh, that proposed structure down. If you look at the uh, the architecture that's uh, on Tim's drawing, just to briefly go over, if you're looking at from the back, from the, from the uh, rear of the house, coming back up towards the backyard, the right side is the part that's a hundred and twenty-six square feet. That contains a changing room, a bathroom and a small storage area for, you know, pool uh, pool floaties and noodles and chemicals, et cetera, could be stored in that area. So that is overall ten foot six by twelve foot, is a hundred and twenty-six per feet under roof. Uh, that can be done fully compliant, so that does not push us over on building coverage. So, but there's also a patio next to it, and so that uh, twenty-two foot and change by twelve foot deep uh, uh, roof extends over the patio with a chimney at the back, nestled into that retaining walls we indicate, so it hunkers itself down. Overall scale of the uh, of the structure is from the uh, from the downhill side, it's eleven foot ten to the peak. So um, using average grade from from the average grade, we're actually eleven foot nine inches, I'm sorry, eleven foot eight inches is the overall height. I would point out that on the uphill side is shown on the lower elevation, and this again, this is Tim Klessi's drawing number two, it's part of your application package. On the uphill side towards the neighbor, from the ground to the underside of the eve, it's actually six foot eight. From the ground to the peak, which sets back at the center of the structure, it's nine foot four. And the chimney is an abruptly, another two, taller. So where eighteen feet of height is permitted on a press restructure, it's very understated and not only is it low in stature by height, but then suppressed into the ground by two feet, so it has even less impact on the neighbors behind us. I'll actually introduce uh, our A exhibit A one, this is uh, the Winter Residence, annotated aerial photo dated November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, the base map is a nearmap dot com image taken from March third, two thousand and twenty-four. We always take it in winter, so you can see the property the best. And you can see the location of the house and the pool and the cabana, uh, the covered patio and the and the uh, the bathroom to the nearest residences, again, a hundred and twenty, it's uh, about ten foot of grade change up to the nearest house at fifteen uh, fifteen Great Hills. About a hundred and twenty-eight feet back, directly behind us, through some trees, is a hundred and sixty-three feet to the rear of the property at seventeen Great Hills, um, these are properties that require, I mean, a hundred and fifteen feet of depth. So clearly, we're quite a good distance from uh, any of the neighboring properties, so it's really no negative impact. Property next to us is large and extends behind us. And again, you can see the properties uh, that front on Great Hills and see the relationships between our proposed structure and those local dwellings.
Yeah, the thing to the left of the property.
Pardon me?
Just go up a little bit, right there, where you're taking with that gray here.
Yeah, so right in here, there's. there, that's the pool, that's the pool on the neighboring property. It's a kidney shaped pool. So you can tell it was done in the 80s, not recently. Bikini shaped pool on the back of that property. This is an unusual property because it extends beyond, behind our apartment. And I would point out, consistent with what's recommended by most of the land use law, my, my client did attempt, not in writing, did attempt to purchase a portion of the rear of Block 22. And they also approached the owners at 17 to see if they could buy a little portion of that, just to get a little more area of the cover, if coverage is over. Both of those requests were rebutted, you know, with no, with no with no animus, but just to say, no, thank you, but we're going to keep our lot. But you can see that there's heavily wood. Again, this is a lot of deciduous trees. You can see even evergreen trees. This is from March. Were well buffer to all the joint property behind us, including the property that comes behind us, wrapped around us. So the variance relief requested is the maximum building coverage where 14% is permitted. That's 3,900 square feet. We're proposing 14.7, which is 4,096. We're over by 194. So the breakdown of the of the 100, 100, I'm sorry, the 126 plus the 204. So the work, the bathroom was fully confined. That was only 126. That left 70 square feet available. The decision was made to, it would be less impactful to the neighbors to extend that low roof over the patio. Rather than keeping a patio with multiple umbrellas on it, going with a milk with pergola on the top of it. So it allows it to sit under that roof line, which picks up some of the vernacular materials of the main house. So this is an architectural viaduct between the cabana and the house itself at the back of the property. The so our variance release is for 194 square feet and related solely to the covered portion of the patio. We see this is a C2 variance. Again, it's not C1, so we're not, we're not arguing this a hardship, we don't need to demonstrate hardship. As indicated by any of the platters heaving, it's a balancing test. We need to show that the benefits outweigh the detriment. We need to still advance some of the purposes of the Land use Act. Talk about the negative criteria is two problems. And certainly, we think that C2 applies. The purposes of the Land use Act, under 4055 B2 that we're advancing, excepting high, that is aesthetic improvement. We think it's aesthetically more attractive to put that covered patio under a low, slum roof. That matches the same roof over the cabana, similar materials at the back of the house, cohesive architectural vernacular. And that's, that would certainly be a better condition than either an open pergola, still a structure that doesn't sound like a building, a building. Or, or as a series of umbrellas that sit at the back of the property. We think it's, it advances aesthetics with regard to the negative criteria. We don't think there's any substantial detriment, but public good. The area can clearly not be seen from any of this rounded space. The existing proposed landscaping and topography, as indicated on A1, limits views from the neighbors. The neighbor to our right, there's significant evergreen coverage between us and their property, or more than the 12 feet off as required. Our pool equipment is located in the center of the property. Original pool guide had it way in the back. We nestled it right into those retaining walls in the back, 136 feet from all property lines and a fully proven permitted location. The structure, as I indicated, is only 11 foot 10 inches high, where 18 feet is permitted. By nestling the structure into the hillside, the height is only 9.33 feet. As I said, it's 6.75 feet to the cover line. The rear of the, the houses to the rear are between eight and 10 feet higher than ours, so they would look over us anyways, even if they could see through the landscaping. The chimney, that's at the back of the structure, actively helps to reflect any sound that will come out of that. Keeping it from the back, which again, plenty of distance. I don't think there'd be any negative impact, many noise, but it really, the chimney does project. So there's a, the potential for a TV. It's shown on the plans to be located over the fireplace. That again, projects sound, if at all, backwards to the house, certainly not towards any of the neighbors. The, we think it's certainly not an overdevelopment. We allow a lot coverage. It's 35%. We're at 31.4%. We have an additional thousand square feet of block covered. We could put on this property, we're over by 100, 1,003 actually. You, you picked up something on the last application that, that we always whenever we see a property, it gets narrower in the back, we worry about rear yard unoccupied. This is not as drastic as some, but we're also well over on the rear yard unoccupied. So I think it's certainly not an overdevelopment property. Again, more than 1,000 square feet of coverage left. We are coming in right at the permitted accessory coverage. With regard to the, no, there's no substantial detriment to the technical purpose of the master plan. You know, Ken, if you read through the master plan, the overriding goal was the first one is to encourage perfect land use that promotes character, the type of small suburb with the highest quality. We've seen a lot of pools go in since COVID. They're elegant, they're well done, they meet setbacks. We just have this issue where we think it's a better alternative to put cover over that patio rather than do umbrellas or something that's less unified. So we think the plan as proposed actually advances the purposes of the, of the master plan. We make the space more attractive. We think it's, it's always nice when I get a client that says, we don't want to go for a variance. We don't want to ask for an extra three feet of height and whittle it down. We don't ask for, we don't want to ask for large patios on both sides. And then they deal with the board. We want to put it on a diet, come with the most compact plan we could, which is what we did. And then, and one thing we felt strongly about is a better opportunity to cover that patio, go through the variance for the 194 square feet. That's my testimony. If there is any questions, then I'm here.
Just a quick question. Are there going to be lights under that covered patio?
There was, are some lights, but it's a there's the ability to nestle them up under the roof and they're down facing lights. So they would be, they would be up, down facing lights built up into the roof line, facing down on that. And that's permitted by code. We're certainly needing the side yards setback.
And if, but if there was no cover, yes.
No, you would end up, well, if you did a pergola, pergola, you could put lighting with pergola, or you can do downward lighting around, around the patio downward. But again, I don't think there's any negative impact of that because it's so part of the neighbors.
Well, the neighbors are, is it say 12 feet from the property line? I don't remember.
It's 12 feet to the chimney, 14 feet to the property line, 128 feet to the nearest dwelling. To the right, which is actually skewed.
And in the back, how much from the covered patio, what is the distance to the near tub?
The covered patio, it's 163 to the house directly behind us. Again, in a, in a zone that will require 110 feet of, yeah, 110, 150 feet, excuse me. 173 feet to the house at, at number 19 Great Hills, 128 to the one that doesn't look correctly into us. I would point out that there used to be a lot more buffering when they built the house at, at 15 Great Hills. They did remove a lot back. There's still a fair amount of evergreen material that's between us and them. And again, we sit, the, the back of our property sits 10 feet down. So they're actually looking right over the roof line from, from 15 and 17. If they could see through the trees, they would be looking right over the roof line of our post cabana. And if those lighting, if you're looking over the roof and the lighting is three feet down facing down, certainly never have any feedback.
It's just back far in the yard for the lights, which is where my head started. And that's sort of atypical. And will they be on a timer or lights out? I mean, actually, I know we have a new lighting.
One is used. I think they would be when, if, if, if they're using the pool and, and there can't be any other lighting, they're using the pool at night. They may be in the cabana. There's no need to put a lot of timers.
And the covered patio, will those lights film a timer or just when, when it's?
Generally just when it's.
Okay. I have a question.
If you could just walk through for a minute, the, you put on your plan that there's, there was an additional drywall installed for future rear yard improvements. On your drawing number one, if you could just walk through how that any drainage from the proposed improvements would get to that drywall, see if it's following.
Well, we actually, what we're doing is we're picking up, there's an inlet at the back. We're showing actually did be here, maybe they're not. We would be picking up the roof leaders from this whole area and directing them into the pipe that comes down along the side. It's shown faintly, connects all the way through to the existing drywall system. So the, we, when we did this development back in, started in 2017, the house was finished in 2019. We anticipated a pool going in, so we added an additional drywall.
So put it up, yeah, I don't see the, on the plan that it connects, but you're representing that it will connect to the, the cabana and the covered patio.
100%. It all, well, it all flows downhill anyway, so if any, any negative impact, it might apply. But yeah, will be required just a bit of full grading plan. Well, it's one of our very conservative growth plan at the start of growth expectation district. As a, as a condition of eventual approval with this board.
Thank you. You just used the term we, are you a part of the original?
I was, yes.
Okay. So if you have a vision for a future pool, then why was the house designed at the building coverage of?
Well, it, there was some leftover. There wasn't, there was none left over.
Some leftover.
Yeah, well, there was, there was what did I say? There was
Right. It was a 3.3%.
I can just, I guess the board from that point. So I'm sorry. So the house that was originally built was from a builder that was just from, so when we purchased the house, that was already set. When we told the builder, hey, in the future, we might want to put a pool in, suggestion was close to the drywall on the front, so that would not trip up our front yard if we did a pool here. So that happened after we already purchased the house, but it wasn't completed.
So the building coverage had changed.
No, it was, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Sorry, I mean, but yeah, that, that, that was not on, the, the, the builder was independent was, was.
Yeah, that's right. When you said we, I could just get out of here. Okay, thank you then.
And then just for the record, Rich, the, we're in our core zone, which minimum last size is 20,000 square feet.
Correct.
We're at 27,871, which is about 40% more, which would probably explain why you're under on every other thing that you mentioned.
Right.
So it's, it's oversized lot for the.
It is an upside. No, that started with that. However, as I said, there was some building coverage event and we're not the largest lot on the block. I mean, we're not the largest house on this block. But we still think, again, there's no hardship and I don't need a, you wouldn't expect a hardship on a property this size. And the C2 variance is flexible C2 variance that was created by the framers of municipal land use law for this specific reason. We can show times when it's a better alternative to go with something that's prior to variance than with something that might be speechable.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Tim, are you, do you need to present or?
No, thanks. I leave.
Board members, what do you think?
I'll go first. Beautiful house, beautiful lot. I'm struggling with the covered patio because I'm concerned about, quite honestly, the precedent in a sense, but also, which we shouldn't be thinking of precedent, but, but thinking of it. The lights with the cabana, that's got four walls, so that's going to contain the light. But the patio just has a ceiling, doesn't have anything to contain the lights from the neighbors. And you're pretty far back in the yard, even though the houses are 194 feet away, they may not always stay there. They may want to pull in. So I actually am concerned about the covered patio from the lights. I mean, you're asking for variance. There's no hardship. So Mr. Watan.
What else?
You know, you could always like skip through the piece or or whatever, but you go ask that. Will you open the hearing and ask for some clarification regarding to buffering, screening, landscaping, particularly what's in the back there?
Okay. I mean, I'll just, I'll, I'll just, before I do that, I'll say that I, you know, there is no hardship, but I think that's what Rich was, he was very saying. And that's not the criteria that this application is being presented, or it's being presented under the flexible C2, which, you know, kind of begs us to ask those, those questions and answer those questions. But if you do have, you know, issues with the lighting, I mean, do we want to open?
Only because it's a luxury and not a, that's necessary.
Okay, is, is the board opening?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I just spoke briefly to my client. We'd be happy, even though there's quite generous lights behind us, we would be happy to put in a long property, a stagger grow of Green Giant Harbor by. Here we don't worry if they get too big. We're happy if they do. So we would do that along the back line and then we would agree that any lighting within the, the, that covered portion of the patio would be recessed downward. So that there's really no, there, there is room to recess the lights here, but so that it will shine down and there's no way that it can be seen from you don't see the source of the bulb even five feet away and certainly you'd never see it under a bottom of the line. But we'd be happy to stipulate that the only lighting inside of that full voltage lighting would be in the form of recessed lights.
And does the current code address anything about exterior lighting going off this certain kind of, you know? I know it's a little past, but I I mean.
We're, we're happy to comply. We'll certainly comply with any contingency words.
I don't think we'll do that very late, if there's anything we can do to stipulate.
Yeah, it's a teenager, it's a big teenager saying, yeah, you're two in the morning.
It would change.
Yeah.
Sweet to the people. Yeah, I mean, if, if, if there was a preference, it gets down to enforcement. But with the preference that, you know, we normally don't put them on timers on residential uses when they turn them off, I think at 9 o'clock they turn them off. But we could certainly put something in where they would be turned off no later than.
Well, I don't know if we can.
It's an enforcement.
We can of course that, right. I was going to say, I don't know that that would be.
My client's very hard. I don't know about them, who may buy the house in the future, but we're certainly fairly restrained in keeping the lights off whenever possible. Because if anything affects anybody in the neighborhood, it's them looking back up. And I would be bitching, who left the lights on? Get back up there and turn them off. I could switch inside the house.
Yeah.
I'd be on my son, I did all the time.
As they said, you could also, I mean, even if they didn't have the covered patio, you could still put landscape lights. Yeah, just like any of the rest of us, to keep our landscape lights on all night, you know?
Given, given that it's recessed into the roof, given that they're lower than the houses behind them, given that there's going to be landscaping in the harbor light. I, I just, and they're very far away, they're 150ish away. I don't see how it was going to be, which seems unlikely, you know, any kind of.
Well, he just comes to the neighborhood, so.
Okay, but not even, not even about the art, frankly, but then I think with the art varieties, I just think there's really no, like, to build itself.
I'm going to want to see my client, just beat out of business.
And Rich just confirmed that the, any LED or other future lighting for television is going to be facing the house.
The television would be facing the house, yeah. That's one of the benefits because if we, if we didn't have that, you probably still have television, but you put it on the backside of the bathroom, which is facing the side. So I think it, it projects sound and light back to us.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think for me personally, that this meets the, you know, flexible C2 criteria. You know, when I, when I was first looking at it, I was thinking like, oh, well, maybe you could take away some patio and put on some stepping, you know, stepping stones. But that's not what this is about. It's not about accessory, you know, coverage. It's about building coverage from having a covered patio. And when you think about the alternatives to having a covered patio, it would be umbrellas. You know, and kind of what's the lesser of two evils? I mean, if there's a storm named Rose blow over, you know, always go, you know, kind of pretty, you know, that weather conditions, you know, it's a, I, I think it's basically done. And I think that, you know, I, I think that it, it needs a criteria for the C2 variance. So I would be comfortable approving.
I agree with that. I don't, I don't like that. Also, I just don't think there's a big ask in terms of the amount of, of the over. You know, I think my OCD says you could even cut off the edge of that covered patio, so it aligns with the rest of it. I, I'm sure that would even get you frankly, but it does make the transition a bit. But, but I think it's not really a big ask. So I don't, I'm not, sorry about it.
I had the exact same thoughts we did Gary about cutting back. But yes, for what you're looking to do, really harbor party in there is great.
Yeah. We, we, we had alignment, but we were over a little bit on accessory coverage. We trimmed down the patio, so. But we, we did, we did a furniture layout in, in the. But we we did we did a furniture layout in in the banner, we didn't know what was, so I I share your OCD, I'm I'm a Virgo and I'm a mirror, not a good company.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion with the modifications as expressed that the arbor by DB means. Uh, installed or done and planted.
Let me retain the state of your interest and make a motion to approve. Conditions discussed were stagger broil, green giant arbor buddy along the river pocket line, and the lighting for the, uh, covered patio would be recessed.
And some of the television, did that get added, or is that as that just sort of?
That's up to you.
That's, I mean, it seems like a reasonable thing to to maintain while we're at it, while we're concerned about the neighbors, so.
That any television will be facing that house, that will be.
Thank you, thanks. It's for your help.
Second.
Gary Rosen?
Yes.
I bet you were just complimenting yourself.
Yes.
Yes. Maybe you're.
Yes.
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 Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can raise your hand too. You have permission, it's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know. Oh, is that really? I'm sure I would not.
Yeah.
This is doing that small lots.
Yeah.
All four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's literally. One piece away.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a lot.
Mm-hmm.
So wait, this is the, uh, with.
Yeah.
But I find it.
More annoying, right, but what the hell's going on, because it's doing as opposed to.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I'm the arm. Analysed.
Uh, yes, yeah, okay.
Can everyone portray your right hands, these were from testimony about to give a nice proceeding, be the truth, hold three hundred for the truth.
Yeah.
Your names, the record.
Robert Forbes.
Jamie Lachter. Jamie Lachter.
Hi, everyone, my name is Howie Wachtel, this is my wife, Jamie Wachtel, we appreciate your time regarding our property twenty eight Hall, Norman Road. By way of my way of background, Jamie and I are both native to New Jersey, we've been members of the Millburn Shore Hills community since two thousand nineteen. We moved from the Glenwood section into our new residence in the Knollwood neighborhood in the summer of twenty twenty four. We have two daughters and an eighth grader Zoe at Millburn Middle School, and a third grader Emmy at Hawthorne. We're committed members of the community and schools, having served as coaches of our kids' sports teams, and as a class parent, and other volunteer opportunities with school PTOs. We knew a couple of years before our time at our previous home that we would need additional space for our family. After close to three years of looking for a new house, we moved to our current home in Knollwood. We love the community, we love the proximity to downtown Millburn, we feel fortunate to be there. That said, despite loving the house, there have been a couple of things we can't change. The lack of the backyard and the lack of useful basement space. For that reason, the project we have in mind is adding a screened porch to our minimal outdoor space in the backyard, so our family can enjoy it throughout more of the year. This would not require us to expand the footprint of of the house, only to add marginal space to the rear. This would stay consistent with the look of the rest of the house and keep to the character and size of other homes on the block. And with this project, we're simply hoping to make the space more useful for ourselves and our kids, as we look forward to being there for years to come. Thanks for your consideration, just turning it over to our architect, Robert Ford.
Getting everyone, oh, my good information. Um, so, uh, Robert Forbes, architect, uh, across the board architects, I, uh. The president, two thousand seven, from NJI two, the Bachelor of Architecture. License, considering Jersey in two thousand fourteen, I've been practicing in the area ever since, I've been. For this board, on local engagements, uh, also most recently, some, uh, Matt is.
Uh, license.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, so here we have, um, twenty eight Hawthorne Road, it's lot eighty three block twelve oh six, it's in the R six zone. It is an oversized lot for the zone, but it is a corner lot, so it's seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six square feet, or six thousand square feet is required. Um, it's a colonial revival built in nineteen thirties, it has very understated, um, simple detail, and it's a longer building, but it sits low. Um, on the street, which I think really helps it kind of scale into the neighborhood, and as I get into what we're proposing, um. The screened in fort along the right side wrapping. Out of the back right corner of the the back of the garage, um, there is an existing patio there, that's a little bit underutilized. Not in the greatest shape, it's kind of an uninviting space in on the property, um. There's almost no real rear yard on this lot, because the building has been pushed all the way back into that back corner, really didn't comply with the front yard setbacks. That's the challenge of a corner lot, this lot is wide, almost, I think, would probably average around a hundred and ten feet in width. Um, if you did the front and the back, because there is a radius there, as you can see, on the sheet BOA one. Um, but it only fifty feet deep, so, um, the challenge is when you get these kind of longer, skinnier. Houses is there's a lot of circulation, a lot of pandemia, or a little bit more coverage, um, than it would otherwise have with a deeper house. Um, so we're asking to add three, uh, three hundred and sixty-one square foot porch over some existing patio space. We're not increasing, um, the patio size, we're actually not even covering the whole patio, because I'm. Should bring this over here.
You don't need that.
Oh, perfect. I haven't turned it around last week. Um. We're pulling in from the property line five feet to allow us to maintain and replenish. The kind of skip laurel shrubbery that's really buffering the two properties, um. So. Where the side setbacks require to be eight feet, we're proposing five feet in this back corner, and that's really to kind of just try to give them a. Inviting outdoor space that everyone wants to enjoy with their families, uh, we're also set back, uh, forty point. Three nine feet from the front facade, we're way back, we're behind this existing fence that's there, it's very hard to see this. To see this, um, screened porch, and I think it's also, um, nice to show that we are not saturating this site at all. We're actually under lock coverage, where forty-five percent is allowed, we are only at forty-one point two seven, and we are remaining unchanged. Uh, there are some features to the house, like there's this existing, um. They call it a porch in front of the garage, which is, it it's got a column on it, so it is counting as coverage, it's hurting us a little bit, but. It's driving those roof lines down, and I feel like really helped to. Make it look more compatible with the neighborhood, like, so we don't want to start trying to remove some of this, these features and some of these coverages to reduce our numbers, um. That's that, a little bit. For the sheet BOA two, showing a little bit of floor plan. But in this kind of unverified space on sheet BOA two, back here is the existing kitchen. Here's the mudroom access to the garage, and here's where this kind of wraparound patio is, assuming some of you guys went there and saw it. And it's in need of kind of being reactive, it's in need of kind of, you know, modernizing everything, you know. So you can see we're maintaining this kind of shrub wall here, skip laurels, we have an access door. To the screen porch from the driveway side through that fence that's remaining. And outward to this kind of walkway that goes across that the kids could play in the front park. This is just a roof plan showing how it kind of very cleanly wraps around the, uh, the house. It's a hip roof, because we we're trying to really keep the the roof low, we we realize we are getting closer to the property lines, we're trying to keep the roof low. The gutter line's at about eight and a half feet, and it's still being up to twelve feet, um, really sitting down low. As you can see from the front side. We are gonna screen it, you can see the screens in there. Like, and we'll be able to use it more often, we'll be, um. Downlighting in there. There, you can see the little screw. G P area five. And then I did prepare an exhibit. So three photos, mark. Hello? Anyone? I took these photos this morning. Um, so photo A is just showing the kind of the front side of the building, you can see that kind of forged over the garage doors, I would refer to. See this existing fence that's there, and the the rear of the porch will be set back. From that, as they sort of almost four feet back in that sense, where we're going wrapping around. Here, you can see this kind of great buffering between the neighboring lots. As I kind of get behind that fence, on photo C, you can see this patio, it's kind of in need of some repair. Photo D, that's the access from the mudroom, that's that walkway where that door would go, and again, you can see the buffering between here and the neighbor's house. I took, um, there's a photo, a house we worked on about ten years ago at eighty two Britain Road, that's right, that's literally right around the corner, it's right there. Sight is here. That has, again, this is a front facade wraparound porch, but at this point, I thought it would be interesting to go that this kind of style porch is in the neighborhood on a similar. Style home. I think it really adds to the look of the house, and what I think is also interesting in this area that I took, is we're not at a point in the street where all the houses are kind of stacked together. If the, we're kind of at this irregular point in the streets where we have. We're facing kind of forward on the eyebrow here, along with. The neighbor, right, so we have two side yard there, after we build the porch will be. About twenty-five feet apart after the porch is built, again, in the R six zone where he put setback far allowed, so there's, there's a lot of light in there between all of these houses. Even though it's in the R six zone, because of how the roads are all coming together. Um, for here, this one that faces on Hawthorne, we're kind of into the rear yard, we'll have about twenty-five feet also there after the porch is built. And we'll have about thirty feet to this effect, the amount of diagonals on the porch, so there's still a lot of space between all of these structures. Which will always be in the R six, kind of with the neighborhood. And that's, uh, yeah.
So is there an access to the porch directly from the house?
Yes, there is. Through the mud. So this is the existing kitchen here, and this is the garage, and there's a mudroom, that door that I showed you that one picture is right there, that's the access office porch.
So those skip laurels are proposed, they're not.
Well, they're currently there, but but they are going to kind of be replenished, they're gonna be removed and replenished as the construction.
And they're gonna heat this, I assume, so they can be used in the winter?
Yeah, there's a couple infrared meters that are being installed, and there's three of them, kind of facing inward in the ceiling, will be out of view from.
And this will be a nice, like, a family room, or just extra space?
It's not really a family, it's really trying to serve as, they really have very little outdoor. Outdoor living, and it's just a very uninviting kind of corner to have that patio, and also don't do that, the lot is so.
Yeah, so they're kicked over, yeah.
Um, so we're just trying to activate that corner, give them, make them want to go out there, enjoy an outdoor meal, uh, watch some TV, or. Just socialize around the cops, not the family room, the family rooms, um, the living room in the house is over here. It's not gonna be ever, it's not gonna be enclosed, rock proposed enclosed, it's gonna be an open.
You said that in the documents, is that binding, they said in their documents that they're never gonna make this an actual.
Yep.
Whatever's in the application materials and the plans, they're not asked for it to. Do something that evades from those, they don't have to come out to the board.
Um, along the side, you're putting in, or I was in that, I went to your backyard a little yesterday, um, I rang the bell.
Um, you're welcome anytime.
Um, but what you're proposing, you're putting. The extension or the covered screen porch, and then you have three feet to your boundary, and in that space.
And it's five five.
Five feet, okay, so you have like three feet of it, so it'd be taken out by the the skip laurels, and you have an existing fence, is that yours? On your, you want that chair, yes? It was online, it looks like.
Yeah, it's pretty much, it looks like the one on this side is theirs, the other one is close to.
Yeah, I see.
It was there when we purchased it.
It just that doesn't, there's not much room there to even maintain yours.
Um, so, I mean, part of the reason that we picked that five feet, um, is it's kind of similar to your accessory ordinance, the five feet, like if there was a detached garage, and you had to kind of maintain behind a detached garage. Or, um. So there there's, there's enough room to kind of get back there, get the leaves out, walk around, maintain it. Not something that, like, if you're gonna walk as a family, you're gonna go through, but for me, to maintenance, there's enough.
Yeah.
What what's, what's the existing building coverage?
Yeah. The existing building coverage is one thousand nine hundred and six square feet. Or twenty-four point three five percent.
Say that again, twenty what?
One thousand nine hundred and six square feet or twenty-four point three five percent. Where twenty-three percent is allowed.
So it's, so you're over already on existing.
We are over already out of that existing.
So, um. What's the delta between the twenty-four point three five percent existing and twenty-eight point nine seven percent proposed in square footage?
Three hundred and sixty-one square feet is the square footage of the porch.
I'm sorry?
Three hundred and sixty-one. According to us, that's twenty-eight point nine seven percent.
Can you just put on the record, um, why it is that it's being proposed to three hundred and sixty-one square feet and not a smaller square?
So the the square footage of the porch is really being driven a little bit by. Um, the two uses that we're trying to get out there, more than to use one of some outdoor space, it's it's not a very deep. We were gonna do a new porch on the back of the house, it would be probably fifteen feet deep, okay, but this is only, um. Ten foot seven interior space on the right side and deep on the back side, so. It's a narrower space that needs to have a little bit more length to accommodate these multiple functions, and again, like, you want to have a sofa outside. And again, like, you wanna have a sofa outside and a table outside to sit at. But that's really what's what's governing the size of the porch. Two functions.
So not to steal Robert's. Uh, O C D, but why didn't you make it straight with the host? Um, like. The corner, it sort of goes over.
In the front here?
Maybe that's just because that's the shape of the patio on this, but the the, I guess it's the back.
In the front room?
Or in the back there?
The back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Or or if I went straight here?
Yeah, it's like. Yeah, that would give you actually a little more space to navigate around the. It will, but it's just, it's not, it's not in line with how.
You, so it pushes out for two reasons. It gives us access with a door that way. But also allows a function to fit there. Otherwise, this would be. Nothing more than a covered kind of pathway to this single. Space that you could program. You couldn't get these two functions then.
So you examined looking at that, but you didn't find it feasible?
It's not feasible to get these two functions, no. Yeah, I think they would like to be able to be in this part of the porch. You know, it kind of see, like, the kids are gonna go this way to look very hard. I'm sure, because they're gonna play in that front corner. That's forty feet off the room. That's kind of where the best active, you know, active player is.
Is there any presentation is why this is beneficial for the master plan and?
Yeah, so I think that's.
Or is it C one or C two?
Well, I I I was going I see one for the hardship of the of the lot, the corner lot and the siding of the building being really pushed back to the corner. However, I think you could approach this from a C two step one too. Um, I think there's no negative impact to the neighborhood. It's really pushed off the plane. It's really hard to see from the streets. Really hard to see committing the neighbors with the. With the landscaping and shrubbery that's in place and going to be maintained. There's no kind of harm to lighten air ventilation because of how it explains. Uh, the roadways that are there and where the houses are aligned. There's still. More than adequate, more than normal space between the houses for this zone. Um, and I think it's important for. The positives that they can modernize this space, update this house. You know, update the the older housing stock that I think like it. A lot of the newer houses that are built on a lot like this that are a lot taller. A lot bigger, look so much bulkier and have more mass than this. Even if it wouldn't conform, then this older home that's longer. Understated, simply telling. So I think, I think you can approach this from a C one and C two.
Any other questions from board members? Anyone in the audience with any questions? Any comments from the audience? What was the public portion? What everyone thinks?
Yeah, I'm I'm, I'd be supportive of the application. I think that, I think this is a better use of that space. At the, at the patio. I I live in this neighborhood. I know there's not. A lot of uh, space generally when you have a backyard, you know, when they have a backyard. Um, and so I think, you know, I think it's probably a better. Better way for the family to enjoy the property than have the small amount of space that would be there outside as a patio or otherwise. Uh, and I think it's sectioned off enough from uh. The other homes that I think. That would work. It's obviously pretty close to the property line. Uh, which is not great, but I think that's always a problem in that neighborhood. You're always right on the property line. Uh, so I I would support if they. Have established the. Criteria for the various.
I appreciate that context and input. Um, I think I was struggling with it, like the prior application and building coverage is just getting at it. Um, but I think with the testimony. Um, just regarding the, you know, the corner lot. Um, and the existing setting of where the the building, the home sits. Um, and I think, yeah, hearing your context of the building in that neighborhood and understanding it helps. So I think I could be supportive as well.
I will go the other side. Um. It's already overrun coverage. Uh, we're just exacerbating it. It's, I think it's a beautiful house, actually. Uh, I went all around, think it looks great. As far as like them putting a patio up there, just refurbished patio. It's becoming another section of the building. Um, this is pretty substantial. It's heated, it'll be, I mean. Reseasoned or that, you know, at minimum. So it is an extension of the building itself, I believe. Um, and it is real close. I mean, nobody objected to it today. Doesn't mean that the next person who lives there might have. That that could object at this point, but that it's just not what that's supposed to design for. As far as a corner lot, not all corner lots, just the fact that you're on a corner is a handicap. I mean, thi- this building is set far enough back that essentially your corner lot, your your size of fronts become your rear yards. That's just, you know that going into it. So I am against.
Hi, I'm on the fence for this one. I I'm probably more on the side, Mr. Caulfield, because you do have an oversight lab, and and I know that is a hardship, but it's just kind of odd. It's an odd request, actually, to. To screen in. Patio. Um, I'm not sure I've seen that before, but I am a little concerned with that for. Asking for building coverage, which I think we should take fairly seriously, and it is really tight back there, so. Um. I think I'm entering on the side of of not approving this side. I would feel better if you. Shunk it back a little bit to get a little more room. I don't think your skip laurel is gonna survive. You're not gonna get enough sunlight. But that's not for me to decide.
Homino, do you wanna give your opinion?
Yeah, I I guess um. From what I can see, um, you know, the. I don't really know the area that well and, you know, can actually go there myselfs. Um, but just the fact that it's it's very close to the property line and I don't know. Where the other properties, like, you know, they're building it from, from, um, you know, the property that we are discussing here. Um. I feel like if we can reduce the delta a little bit, like for three sixty-one square foot. It is the delta between existing and proposed. Um, if that shrinks, to me, would be, you know, more of an acceptable um. Proposal in my mind, so I'll probably go with Joe. And I'll go against it.
And Steven, would you like to give your opinion?
My opinion is, uh, I wish I had a screen in the porch. And I don't, I don't like them. I'm gonna go yes.
You're very sensitive. You know, I was there, um, I was there earlier today and I was a little shocked by just how tight this space was. And it's funny because when I was looking at the plans before I went over, it just, it seems on the plans like a lot more space, but then once you get back there. It was hard to even. You know, imagine, like, I I I walked around a little bit. I'm like, I don't even understand, you know, the patio because it does feel um. Like it's, like it's. You know, it's pretty tight. Um. You know, that being said, I mean, you you you, there's a patio there anyway, and, you know, the patio's. You know. As a, as a right, I mean, you know, it's set up. Um, I don't know that I'm so bothered by just putting. Um, a screen on it to to make it more. Um, to make it more usable. Again, you know. E- either way, you could have a patio or, you know. You know, make it a little bigger and then, you know, add add the, have the screened porch. Um, I would hope that the um, skip laurels would survive. I mean, we could put in, I guess, a um. Also, they should be maintained, right? Um. So if they. Die, then you would have to replace them or you'd have to figure out some other method um, of screening. But I mean, I I I have to say this is absolutely. A tough one. It's not an easy yes for me, and it's not an easy no for me, but I guess I I'd be leaning more towards um. You know, approving it with the condition that those skip laurels be maintained. Um, and if not skip laurels, that we need some other uh, greenery that will, you know, be maintained in perpetuity.
We have no problem doing that. I mean, we wanna maintain the greenery anyway.
Um. So would someone like to make a motion? Uh, I would make a motion to approve the application. Uh, with, I guess, provision that the. Landflaking. Preplantings aren't made. Or the second?
Second.
Danny Rosen?
Yes.
Regina Stewart?
No.
Pep Sol?
Yes.
Yomino Roberts?
No.
David Coleman?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
No.
That's the plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I didn't ask permission.
You're still one who asked.
I might ask for. I didn't.
Yeah.
Now, you guys.
Yeah, right, why would this one be free? But anyway, yes, it's like, just like give us a little, a little. Nice thing negotiated. And actually, we didn't even think about.
Yeah, I tell you, Steve, I can, we've got a.
Yeah, 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 no, no. This could run the highway up there.
Oh, with the.
But.
Love it. Oh, my God, yes, I like, they described how sweetly you need, so and then there was this. I was doing more like that, like, I didn't know. And that was, so I'm not gonna, I think, so now they're, they're. I'm trying to keep working.
So I'm a ladder, I'm a standard, fabulous.
No, man.
Everything, yeah.
Sorry, I had to go.
All right, Dan, you ready?
Yeah. Um, okay, last up, we have calendar four zero five seven dash twenty-five. The property location is forty-four, so.
Having.
Both you, Rich. You swear from testimony about to give a nice proceeding, truth, all truth, not both truth?
I did.
Your name is director. Names?
Stephan Mayon, S T U B L E N E, Mayon, M A I L L A R D.
Daniel Dupinet.
I think he he needs to get his qualification for that.
Absolutely. Sorry. Okay, license is still given in its. In effect. Uh, again, practiced over twenty years in town here and uh. Primarily residential, I think, sure, and. You're before the board before.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have. I don't know if you wanted to say a few words, you want me to jump in?
I can say a few words. So first, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your time to consider this project. Um, I, my wife apologizes she did not make it tonight. Um, so we've been, actually, the first time and the last time I was in this building was exactly thirteen years ago. When we moved to uh, Milburn. From Europe, and you can still hear my heavy French accent, uh, does not come with the system too. Um, and um, so we, our two sons actually graduated from uh. Milburn uh, high, middle school and high school. Um, so we um. Got the citizenship in two twenty twenty-three. Uh, we both work in Morris Town. Uh, we love our neighborhood, so we are here for quite some time, and that's why we uh, discussed this project with. Um, Danny, uh, who became a flitmitch, uh.
Yeah.
Estety, I'm here than we have, so I will let him.
Thank you so much. Um. Can you hang me? There's another project that's undergoing, under construction. The difference between this one and the previous one is that this one, we. Uh, we agreed while we were designing, we go for permits, that we would. Do this as a lattice structure, pergola. Um, but they felt that they're gonna get more use and more function and. Pleasing if they could now, uh, instead of pergola, have a covered roof. Uh, well, a uh. The aesthetics, but also the functionality and the way we've designed it. So basically, there's one variance needed, so we. The existing house is currently um. Existing nonconforming, it's it's currently seventy-six square feet over on building coverage. And I apologize. It's not working, but I. If I could explain the house, it's a corner lot. It's an empty zone. It's slightly underside. However, it's a. It's a ranch over. Doesn't necessarily seem like it's overbuilt on this property. There you go. Um, so if I may, um, we put these into exhibit, we call them. A one, a two. Thank you. And I will, I'll be serious to Mark. Uh, yeah, so here's the corner lot. Um. Yes.
Zoom out, please. Open story time. So. Wh- what, what is what? What does A one and V two?
Uh, it, it's a V one, V two, what you have. Currently, I just put some, you know, thoughts upon it, and then a series of photographs and Google.
Okay, so is V one and V two gonna represent A one?
What is V one?
So you have your, you have the two sheets.
So but you marked them up.
You marked it up.
I marked it up.
Oh, okay.
But now, what is we have? So why don't we mark? V one and V two as A one. Consisting of two pages, V one and V two. As marked out.
In your book, and then a series of photos, yeah.
A two will be the series of what? Is it six photographs? But not nine.
Two Google map images and the rest of photographs I took recently.
Okay.
Thank you.
So go, go based on.
So we are.
And A two, go right ahead.
Thank you so much. Uh, the only variance that's required is building coverage, and like I mentioned, it's an existing nonconformity, so. Anything that gets done is how we require of being front of board. One thing that we would just like to not say that. Because we're adding more building coverage, we would. One thing that we would just like to come out and say that because we're adding more building coverage, we would testify and put on record that we will never ask the closing to increase yet.
Eric.
Which is significantly undersized in property, primarily because of the ranch. But we would testify here tonight that we would maintain the landscape in which exists on the property. So that's, I think, one of the things that makes this certainly no negative impact to neighbors, a significant amount of landscaping there that exists that will continue to grow. And so we would like to testify that we will as a prediction of approval of, you know, maintain the conditions of those giant, giant, giant properties. And so as a corner lot, it's incredibly private feeling. And only because of all that landscaping. So this is a, if I pick you to A two, this is a Google map image. And from this, I was able to quantify a little bit of the distances. So it's a hundred fifty six feet to the nearest home on Western and sixty feet this way. And it's very, very well swayed all the way around the property. So this is a really nice image. This is, if you're looking down the side of his property, the left of these arboraries is Western. If we look at this, this is an image that I took from Google Maps, which shows that I don't think this house is significantly overbuilt for the property. So by allowing the additional building coverage, which is, if I tell you about numbers, we are seeking we are seeking fourteen point three percent, or thirteen percent is the requirement. So it's an overage of three hundred and ten square feet, which is a ten percent deviation. But that also includes the additional seventy six that the house is currently over. So the net delta on those two things is about two hundred thirty three square feet of new building coverage. And that's allowed to allow us to build this beautiful roof structure, which I do think will be way more attractive than open pergola. And the reason I say that is because of the design of how we've done this. So there's an existing existing extension to the first floor, which is a family room and it has a gable roof. So we're looking to build the structure eleven feet off the house. And there's a brick chimney there that exists. So it's going to have about nine foot eight inches of covered area and it's just for a dining room table. Having heard the previous application about the TV, we have talked about that. We would testify there will be no TV. But on this brick chimney and lighting, recessed lighting. That would function as this thing. So there is an interesting story that, of course, he went, he bought a Home Depot gazebo at some point in the, you know, we all like to have the coverage and that blew away. So it was exciting to think of something more permanent. Obviously, I think more aesthetically appealing. It just kind of organically grows out of the first floor addition that exists. So very modest ask. And one other thing that we forgot to mention is that we spoke to the neighbors. And that they well, because they were here, gave us support on Western.
Yeah. So yes, the one that has had the biggest impact, of course, with this year and was very supportive. She came to us on Sunday and she said, yeah, absolutely fine. Especially because Western is actually lower. The slope is this way. So actually, we are over there, the house. So actually, they with the, the trees and so on. So there is no, actually.
Yeah, this, this photograph on the lower left is on Western and the Mayard's house to the right. And the one, I don't know if it's a swell address or Western address, but the house is lower elevation and the screening that exists already is very, very, very fragile. So I think obviously by maintaining, keeping what, what's there, there's no impact, negative impact to neighbors or neighborhood by allowing this. So we ask for your, we ask for your approvals.
Was there a pool? Do I say pool?
There's a proposed pool that's being built. Well, it's not part of the application, although it's part of the project. We are doing a deck and a pool in the back of the house.
Oh, where's the pool going to go?
The pool is going to go. It's kind of sitting there now. It's.
This is built.
Oh, it's inside.
This is built.
Okay, it was like the sun was setting.
Part of it's in the grain. And the reason that they chose for this deck structure versus in ground is because the slope to the backyard and then the elevation change from.
Oh, so it's part of the deck?
Yes.
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 Since the deck is projected from the first floor, that's included in your building coverage, correct?
The deck is not building coverage.
Yeah, that's the.
It's the roof. Thank you.
It's the roof.
Right. So lot coverage, we're very, very well below the maximum allowed. But where we get close, which we designed to, was the accessory use coverage. So there could be no more structures and patios that came to the board as permission. So yeah, the one building coverage variance.
Sorry, you already said this, but I couldn't get my pen open. Is the lot oversized or undersized?
Undersized, slightly undersized.
Thank you.
Maybe not even slightly. At twenty three twenty three thousand, is it twenty one? One three seventy three and minimum requires forty nine.
So like by six, more than six hundred. So if the lot were appropriately sized, would you need a variance for this?
Probably not, because we're only, what, run the calculation? Forty nine thousand times twenty percent. Twenty nine thousand times point one three.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
No, I was point two three. I didn't do the calculations.
Forty three percent is the building coverage, right? So that would yield us six thousand, six hundred and seventy. And where am I? No, it's thirteen percent.
I'm sorry, the, it is thirteen percent. I gave you wrong information. That was on the last application.
Forty nine thousand times point one three. Thirty seven hundred. We're good. We would not need the rest.
Yeah, that will.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, you're asking for three hundred square times square meter or six hundred feet short.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Real easier.
Anyway, okay, thank you.
There's also, which I don't come across often, but there's a very, very large right away that takes away from the calculation that we could use. So although it appears that, you know, I guess the property lines you can see are are into his lot. So this is the right of way. Although this is the property line, so that will be, so this cannot be used. If we use it, we do not.
And do the fence.
The right of way.
Oh, you're saying plus his, D gives it to the center line of the right of way?
Right.
But that's subject to an even for the public. That's same with every.
No, but it's not. Your prop, most property lines are inside right of way. So instead of your property line being here, be here. His property line is in the right. So.
To the center of the right.
That's not.
That's a, it's not.
Yeah. So anyway, that.
That's not right.
Do you have a fence back there? I was trying to remember. Do you have a fence? Are you going to re require to put in a fence because of this pool?
Yes, but the, the, the fence will be around the deck. So because of the.
Okay, so the, okay, so you won't be coming back to us asking for variance for the fence?
No, thank you. The, the, the pool and then the, the deck is, is approved and forms zone wise.
So yes, fence, no?
The fence is part of the deck. So it's very interesting. So.
There's no access to the pool from the backyard.
Right. So you have to have the gate before you get up the steps and then the railing of.
I mean, I got access, but if you probably filled it, that happens.
So we know we don't need additional fencing.
Huh. If it's in a deck, you don't need to.
Right, because it's interesting. Because we're elevated, that counts. And so I guess the wall is fifty four inches or so. Right. So the thing, the deck here, and then we have a three foot railing. We're good as long as the egress to the steps has been.
What, what criteria are you?
C two. I think that the obviously good for family, no negative impact to the neighbor. So definitely C two.
Any other questions from board members? Would you use the hardship of the lot size? You know, just did the whole calculation.
Yeah, right.
Did you say?
Well, he didn't want to do it just.
You cannot use the square footage outside the right of way lot.
You cannot use that to determine any of my number building coverage, lot coverage that they are. Yeah.
And does your application include the lighting? I'm sorry, didn't notice it that they will be recessed and pointing down.
We would love to do whatever language necessary.
Oh, okay. So it's not part of the application already. So we need to add it?
I added to the testimony that we went to recess lighting and I mean, I, I drew, I don't know if we, well, I drew lights on the columns, but
So we can, also your landscaping would be maintained.
I think that's, I think that's important.
The three conditions that the applicant agreed to were the lighting, recess, and plenty of maintaining the landscaping on the property. And that this area will not be enclosed with the pergola.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I don't see anyone in the audience. Any questions from anyone in the audience? Yeah. And obviously no comments from anyone in the audience. So I'll close the public portion and ask you all what you would like to start.
I'll start quickly. I went to the property just as the sun was setting, but I was able to see it and saw, saw your watching people and they were a little alarmed. But anyway, that's okay. We're all fine now. But at first I was like, yikes, this is tight and this is going to take up the whole yard and this is so close to the setback. But I have to say that, that I, I believe there is a hardship on this property. It's an undersized lot already. And you, you addressed that you're going to be mindful of the lighting, that it's going to be down, there's going to be the maintenance, maintenance of the hedge. So in light of that, that I think there is actually a hardship here. I would be in favor of this.
I'll follow. I was there yesterday. I saw you working hard doing this landscaping. So I think it's pretty modest. I think it's I know that the Western does slow down the back, so it's not going to be really an impact for the neighbors behind. I don't think there's enough growth back there. So I'd be supportive of this.
I'm going to add with the conditions that is.
Yes.
That we discussed.
Add some.
No, no, I'm going to say my approval would be contingent on those conditions. Right, go, sorry, go ahead. Here it is.
Okay, great.
It's an awesome patch by the way. Remember when you planned it?
Um, I was just going to say, is it only to make a motion? I'm going to make a motion to approve with those three conditions.
Second. Danny Rosen?
Yes.
You're going to show it?
Yes.
That door?
Yes.
You'll be going on?
Yes.
Daisy Common?
Yes.
Joseph Caulfield?
Yeah.
Jessica Black?
Yeah.
Guys. You two are still on. So there's no one in the audience separating up any matters that are unrelated to tonight's agenda. So would someone like to make a motion to have closed this meeting? Motion. You want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Mine. Do you reuse these? No, no. Good thing we're off.
You can use them at home. Yes.
Yes, I would use it like crisp decoration.
Actually did for.
What?